Well, they have some alert things on the page. You don't see the mountain?
The school thing is going to pass? What?
We need more data, like on the, um...
Yeah, I hope not too. Hugely...
Good evening, everyone. It's, uh...
$150 million.
Yes. 6:03 PM, and I'm calling the meeting of the Hamilton Planning Board to order. This meeting is being recorded by H.W. Cam. I'll begin with roll call. Please indicate your present when I call your name. Pat Norton.
Pat Norton here.
Jonathan Poor.
Jonathan Poor here.
Bill Wheaton.
Bill Wheaton here.
Darcy Dale.
Darcy Dale here.
Amel Dahlquist.
Amel Dahlquist here.
And Marnie Crouch here. And I note for the record that Beth Herr is absent, as are our two associate members, Jeff Austin and Matt Hamill. We have quite a busy agenda this evening, but we'll proceed as expeditiously as we can. Our first matters are two sets of minutes.
If you can find use our cell phones in this part.
I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from February 4th, 2025. I can report that I did make the stylistic edits that we discussed at our last meeting to these minutes. And I know that Jonathan had some amendments to the minutes as well, and I incorporated them. So unless anybody has any more comments as to those minutes, I think we can proceed to their approval.
I just have a couple of comments. My name is still spelled wrong, but close enough.
Are you still Poor?
No, it's Thon instead of Fan. And then the other thing is...
Where is that?
I know we have a busy schedule, but I would really like to read my amendment into the record aloud, because I think it's critical. And either the last meeting or the meeting before that, the applicant was at the podium and, as an aside, mentioned that there were changes to the design of this application. And in my opinion, maybe making the project less safe than it already is. So I would just like to reiterate and read into the record my edits to the minutes here. It's just, it's a short paragraph. May I have permission to do that?
Please.
Okay. So this is regarding the pavilion at the Patton Homestead, new pavilion. So Jay Poor pointed out that, given the pavilion is at the foot of a slope in a bowl-shaped topography, storm runoff will concentrate at the uphill edge of the proposed building slab and tend to run over the slab. In addition, he pointed out the lack of gutter on the uphill side of the pavilion will concentrate sheet runoff at the same location. This could cause significant sheeting of water across the pavilion floor during a rain event. He pointed out that the concerns were the water flow damaging or undermining the structure over time. He also pointed out that, given that all the power systems for bands, lighting, et cetera, PA systems were be laying on the ground and slab, which combined with the presence of sheeting water during a storm event, could pose an electrical safety hazard. He advised that effort be put toward the solution following drainage and safety principles. This included considering safety of walking from the seating area on the hillside to the pavilion slab across any drainage feature. So I don't want to get into what the applicant recommended as an alternative here, but I just wanted to make sure that we were clear that this has been, it's in the minutes. It's a concern. It's a safety concern. It's a place of assembly. That's all.
Okay.
I still make a motion that we approve the two sets of minutes from February 4th, February 26th, 2025, as edited and revised.
Do I have a second?
I second.
When I call your name, please indicate your approval. Pat Norton.
Pat Norton, aye.
Jonathan Poor.
Jonathan Poor, aye.
Bill Wheaton.
Bill Wheaton, aye.
Amel Dahlquist.
Amel Dahlquist, aye.
Darcy Dale.
Darcy Dale, aye.
And Marnie Crouch, aye. I had some very minor stylistic changes to the minutes from February 26th, and I will give the minutes to Mark at the end of the meeting. And Jonathan, you are now a Jonathan instead of Jonathon. There's always a problem with your name. I'm not sure why. So we'll get that all straightened out. Okay. So, Mark, would you please read the public, the notice of public hearing with respect to the proposed small wireless facility on Walnut Road?
The Hamilton Planning Board will review a special permit application on April 1st, 2025, at a meeting starting at 6:00 PM. The Hamilton Runham Library, 14 Union Street, in the main meeting room, in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 10, in the Hamilton zoning bylaw, relative to a special permit application under Section 7.3 of the bylaw for proposed small wireless facility within the public right-of-way for Walnut Road, near 18 Walnut Road. The applicant, New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, doing business as AT&amp;T, proposes to replace an existing utility pole with a new 37-foot-tall utility pole, retrofitted to include a wireless antenna. The project is proposed within the Residence 1A, R1A zoning district. Anyone wishing to speak on the matter is invited to attend the public hearing. Application and plan materials are in file and available for review at the Hamilton Planning Department.
Yes, and I note for the record that the abutters were properly noticed, and we can now proceed with the application for the special permit. And I believe, are you attorney pair?
Aye.
Well, thank you for your memorandum. It was most helpful. This is a section of the Hamilton bylaw that this planning board has not had occasion to review before. So you did a commendable job informing us of what we need to know about this section of the bylaw.
Thank you. Good to go. So let me introduce myself. My name is Ed Paree. It's P-A-R-E.
Oh, I apologize.
Not, no apology necessary. Everybody pronounces it pear. That's fine. I'll answer standing. I am an attorney of Brown Rudnick, One Financial Center in Boston, Massachusetts. I'm here representing New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, which operates as AT&amp;T. And I am aware this is the first application for a small cell facility in Hamilton. I don't think you've dealt with small cell facilities at all. This is also a new bylaw provision that we worked through. I worked with Mark to try to get it right the first time. So it took a little, there were some hurdles and some complications, but I think we ended up with a full application. So just to explain a little bit, I do know that you've dealt with what we refer to as macro sites, which are the towers or the multiple antennas that are attached to a tower, a monopole, water tank, buildings, et cetera. These are somewhat different. They're located generally in the public right-of-way. We use utility poles to attach the facility. The facility consists of an antenna, which is typically up at the top, equipment cabinets, which contains the radio equipment for switching, and then electrical power. Mark, if you put up the elevation drawing? So everything you'll see here this evening is part of your packets that we submitted with the application. So on the left is an elevation of the pole. The pole was too short. I think it was about 26 feet in total height. Hoop.
One second here.
There we go. So you'll see that kind of line, kind of in the middle, it says "top of existing pole." So that's the existing height of the pole. It's about 26, 25 feet 8 inches, I think, if I could see that far. In order to get above the tree line and to provide the signal, we needed a taller pole. And National Grid takes the opportunity, when we come in for these small cell facilities, to get AT&amp;T to pay for the new pole, which, in fact, they did in this instance. There is a requirement that the antenna, the bracket, be four feet away from a secondary power line. And there is a secondary power line on this particular pole. National Grid is ordered to replace the pole. And let me go through how that process works. So AT&amp;T identifies a need for a coverage or capacity in an area. Radio frequency engineer issues a search ring, and then the site acquisition folks go out, try to identify poles. In this instance, I think we identified 24 or 26 poles in the vicinity, which would be within that search ring. They wouldn't all necessarily work. National Grid does have parameters where they won't allow attachments to certain poles, such as if they have risers on them, transformers, major electrical. But in this instance, this pole was available and could be used. I think we eliminated 22 of the 26 poles that we looked at for physical reasons, and I can explain those differences as we go. So in this instance, we apply to National Grid for a license to attach to the pole. That's how we know if the pole's available and if the pole will work. And no competitor has already reserved the pole. National Grid then issues us a license for the pole. It kind of leaves our hands at that point. National Grid then does what they call "make-ready work." And in this instance, they've replaced the pole, moved all the wires. If you took a ride by where this pole's located, you'll see a nice, brand-new pole with all of the wires attached. The one difference is AT&amp;T's equipment's not on the pole yet because we don't have our permitting. That's why we're here. So as I mentioned, there's one antenna attached to the top of the pole. We use these cylinder-type antennas that kind of blend into the poles. So they're not flat-paneled. It's circular antenna, a circular canister with the antenna inside. Right there, it's 24 inches tall, 16 inches in diameter. If we could go back up to the elevation mark. And then we have fiber that runs from the antenna down to the equipment cabinet, which you see is kind of the dark box there. We then have a shut-off switch, as required by National Grid, and then electrical meters so that we're charged for the electrical usage. And there's a grounding rod that's inserted next to the pole. If we... Next page. So the switching equipment, we call them RRHs, remote radio heads. That's what, how AT&amp;T and the customers connect to the network. Those remote radio heads are included and inserted into the equipment cabinet, which you see second in from the left, from the bottom. You also see a depiction of the electric meter. And for the most part, that's the extent of the physical installation for AT&amp;T. If we go to the photo sims? Here we go. So these photos were taken when the existing conditions didn't include the replacement of the pole. So that pole has since been replaced. That truck wasn't there. I drove by there on my way here. There's a pipe with a guy wire. That's all been replaced. So if we can flip to the next slide mark. This will be, this is the proposed condition. So you'll see the antenna up at the top. It's kind of a gray cylinder that's in among the trees and the leaves. The proposed equipment cabinet, and then the shut-off switch and the electric meter below it. I think we have one more.
Could I just ask a question with respect to that gray box with the electrical equipment in it?
Yes.
I know it's not readily accessible, but just thinking like a delinquent teenager. Is it locked?
It is. So it's secured. It's about 11, you know, they differ a little bit, but it's at about 11 and 1/2 feet. So you'd need to do something to get up to it.
Okay.
And it's just electronic equipment. It doesn't have fans. There are no cooling fans. It doesn't make any noise, hum if anything, but there's no, there's nothing to propel coolant or, you know, there are no chemicals in it. It's just electronic equipment. If we could scroll down a couple. We just have two different depictions. This is from the other direction, obviously. One more. And that's the proposed conditions. You want to go to the coverage maps? They're probably not in the... Well, you know, I can run through the alternatives if you want to continue down. Yeah, we could stay on that if you want. Are these, is this the six of them or...?
I think I added them to this version.
Okay. Yep. So this is AT&amp;T's current coverage around what we call South Hamilton. The, you know, we're trying to achieve green. I don't think we're going to get green everywhere for everyone, but obviously, we're looking for green, blue, where we have high connectivity. You'll see we have a lot of pink and orange, which is below AT&amp;T standards. And Mark did ask us to provide some additional coverage maps. This was provided with the original. That blue star is the proposed facility at the location at 18 Walnut. And Mark, if you could just scroll down, you'll see that we then get a nice coverage of green and blue, which is where AT&amp;T will have good, solid coverage for AT&amp;T customers. Mark asked us to produce some kind of zoomed-in coverage maps, which we did. And if we can run through those quickly, they are attached next. This just kind of zooms in a little bit. You're better equipped to deal with where the streets are, et cetera. And you'll see there's a lot of pink underlying there. Obviously, not very good coverage. If we can scroll down one, Mark?
You're an 18th customer, and you're in this pink or orange. Is that like one or two bars?
Yeah, it's not so much bar, but the signal's not, the signal's not going to be very strong. You're probably not going to be able to use your phone inside buildings, especially if there are a lot of users on it. If you're standing outside, you'll probably be able to make a call. We generally can make calls from about everywhere, although I still go to some jurisdictions where it's just flat-out dead. But you'd be able to connect. You wouldn't likely have a good signal, a strong signal, inside your house. You know, video connectivity to the internet would all be slow, if existent at all. So in the pink and the orange, the signal's lacking. If you flipped out, yeah, if we go... So that's the existing coverage again, just zoomed in. And you'll see the next map has the proposed coverage again. We get a good blob of signal from the attachment to the utility pole. And there are two more maps, which likewise are just zoomed in at different... From a different perspective. And again, you'll see where the roads get covered, the houses, businesses all along those, especially in the red, especially in the green and blue will have, you know, very good coverage and indoor coverage. Can we go back to the alternative sites? While he's doing that, I did provide a report from Don Hayes, who does radio frequency emissions. These are pretty low-power. There's only one antenna. We're looking at 7.9% of the FCC maximum. So we fully comply with all of the FCC standards. 7.9%, I'm sorry.
Of the maximum?
Of the maximum. So this is kind of what our, you know, how we decide where we're looking for poles. This is actually an inventory of all the poles in the area. As I said, the radio frequency engineer will, you know, release a search ring. The red pin, if that's red or orange, is kind of in the middle of the search ring. That's a 500-foot radius around that red pin. So we start searching for poles. As I mentioned, there were, I think, 22 of the 26 poles just aren't available for our use. They have transformers on them, risers on them, all sorts of things that I had no knowledge of before I started doing this with the utility poles. But in fact, they, we just can't use them from a physical perspective. There are two poles up in the top, Pole 1070 and 1071. We did look at those. They're not physically limiting, but they're outside, they're kind of at the edge of what the coverage objective is for the site. And we also, from a comparative standpoint, these are both in a residential zoning district. It's similar to what we're dealing with, probably more residential than what we're dealing with at our proposed pole. So from a comparative standpoint, those weren't considered. They don't provide the coverage that a radio frequency engineer is looking to achieve. So we focused on available poles at the, you know, towards the center. Our proposed pole is obviously available. It's 943-84. It's the green pin. If you can see the green there, it's about 3 o'clock. Yep, it's at about 3 o'clock. We did take a look at Pole NT, which is just to the left. Initially, we thought Pole NT was available, but on further review, after looking at Mark's staff report, we did go out and take a look. It does have a riser on it. It's a stub pole, Narragansett Electric calls it. So that's not available for our use. And I did update Mark earlier today. There is one pole that is physically available. It's 2478, which I think Mark also pointed out. Yep, it's right near the pin. We took a look at that. That is an area that doesn't have a lot of vegetation. And looking at your bylaw, the bylaw's intent is to, you know, minimize the visual impacts of these small cell facilities. We think 943-84 does a, does a much better job at reducing the visual impact. It's kind of right among the trees. It's an existing pole. You know, the cabinet's going to be hidden to some extent. We're right on the property line between two properties, so we're not directly in front of somebody's house or somebody's business. So it made sense that, from, you know, a comparative standpoint, Pole 943-84 was less visually intrusive than if we did something up on Bay Road, where there's no vegetation, there's no screening at all. So that's the methodology that we used to go through this. I do have a couple of folks with us on Zoom if there are particular questions of any of the board members. But that's kind of our presentation with respect to what we're looking to do. Be happy to answer any questions.
So I did have a couple of, well, an observation and a question. So my observation is that the letter from Centerline, which attests to the, I believe, the structural integrity of the pole.
Yep.
That letter was from Derek Kresser, PE. That letter is not signed. And similarly, there is a letter from Richard Dech on behalf of AT&amp;T. And that letter goes to the maintenance of the pole as well as to its removal if it's no longer in good repair or no longer in use. And Mr. Dech's authority for signing that letter is not revealed. We don't know his role at AT&amp;T, and that letter is not signed either.
Rich Dech's letter is not signed?
No, there's no signature. And I don't know his capacity at AT&amp;T. I'm sure he's authorized to do this. It's just it would be helpful to know what his position is at AT&amp;T.
You should have, he is, he's an employee of AT&amp;T. He is... I have a signed copy if I can bring it over to you. I got to check on the structural, though. It would be odd that our structural isn't signed.
Okay, I'll show you here. This is Derek Kresser. My copy is not signed. And Mr. Dech. We don't know his capacity.
Is this part of the official?
That's what should have come over to that.
Well, that's his digital signature, but we still don't know his capacity at AT&amp;T, his authority. I mean, these are easily correctable. Oh, I apologize. I have a soft voice. It's not, it doesn't project that well.
So yeah, so I provided Mark with what I had, the digital copy that I had signed. I'll get Mr. Dech's authority to, in fact, sign that. I can represent to this board that he is an employee of AT&amp;T. I know because he's the gentleman I answer to. So he's the one who says, "Go out and get us the site," but we'll get you something specific on his authority. I don't, I don't have the structural reports. I can't, I mean, we'll get you a signed copy without question.
Right, right.
I do have a question regarding 2478. Why would it not go there? What does the other location have? What does the other location have?
I mean, physically, it could go there.
Because that's where all the train, you know, the gates and everything are. And there's a lot of other things in there. And it just seems like if we put everything together, it won't be so sprawling with...
Yeah, I mean, it's a site we'd have to look at. We don't see a physical limitation to it. We'd have to talk to National Grid to see if it's possible to put it there. But it will, it's going to be visible. You know, the site we chose is among the trees.
That was the other question I had. Will the trees bother it in any way, like during storms or?
No, you know, I looked to see if they were going to have to trim some of the trees when they replaced the pole, but they didn't. So, yeah, it's not going to bother. The antenna sits on the top. I mean, it's nothing that moves, there's nothing that, there might be some interference, but you know, that's AT&amp;T's problem more than anything.
I have a couple of questions. I know the pole, the next pole further toward Bay Road is almost on the street. It's almost touching the curbing. And I know that you're just doing a computer simulation of what you're proposing there. When I drove past the pole you're proposing, it looked like it had been moved further away from the curbing. Do you know anything about that? That would be a good thing, because the next pole up is literally on the asphalt. And it looked like when National Grid replaced the pole, they might have moved it back a couple of feet from the asphalt. Anybody?
Are you talking about across?
The one you're proposing, yes. The one you're proposing looks like when it was replaced. I saw the fresh pole, but it looks like it got moved back from the street because your photograph shows it almost touching the backside of the curbing.
Yeah, my guess, I mean, they can't put it in the exact same hole because all of the wires, et cetera. So they'll usually put a new hole. You know, possibly they went behind it so that they could then transfer everything over. Sometimes you'll see them, they'll cut the pole and then just transfer the wires. So my guess is it's close to where it was, but they probably moved it to the rear because they couldn't come into the street.
Right.
But it's purely a function of National Grid.
Sure. But the reason I ask is that, like I say, the next pole and the one that you illustrated here is literally right on the street. And I would think that with all the expensive equipment that you'd be putting on it, that it would be better for it to be further away from the street for safety from traffic, you know, from being hit. So it sounds, it seems as though that happened by National Grid. I'm just trying to get a clarification on that.
I don't, I don't, I can't answer, you know, why they did it. But our equipment won't be over the street. Our equipment will be parallel.
No, I understand. It would be if a car left the road and hit the pole, you know, and took out the pole. You've got a lot of expensive equipment on it, and the pole's literally right next to the asphalt. But I think National Grid may have made it better for you.
Good.
From a safety point of view.
It's just not our call on the poles, that's the...
Okay.
I think, Jonathan, to that point, I mean, maybe that might change your opinion as to the location of the pole at 2478, because that intersection is really busy. And if, I'm sure there are...
There's a pole there already.
Right. But I, there are probably a fair number of fender benders there. I know there are in the Crosby's.
If there's a pole, it'll be replaced. I mean, it'll be the same situation. If, if it's available from National Grid and if that's, you know, the direction we get pushed, then we'd have to see if it's, you know, we'd have to, number one, confirm it, but then the pole would be replaced. It would be the same situation.
Our bylaw also refer, and just to continue on the path you were on, requires to follow Massachusetts State Building Code, which 302 CMR 19 requires to be certain distance from the curb cut, certain distance from sidewalks, certain, the eligible poles can't be any closer than certain distances based on building code. So we should have knowledge of exactly how far things are from other things because it's a state code requirement.
You may, I mean, again, National Grid installs the poles. We don't, I don't know what...
For them to be eligible for your purpose, they have to follow the state sets. And there are distance requirements.
So what I'm suggesting is that the photograph might not be indicative of actually where they, National Grid put the pole.
That could very well be.
Yeah. And, and it would be interesting to know where they did put it. And I didn't, I didn't carefully compare the photo and the field condition, but in driving by, I know they weren't saying...
And looking at the existing condition, when we took our photo, they've moved the pole back without question.
Yep.
Yeah, it's not only the pole, it's the guide wire, too, that looks like it spans the sidewalk. So that, that information would be, would be valuable, but...
It's supposed to be four feet from the sidewalk.
The pole itself?
Any structure is supposed to be four feet from the sidewalk.
Wow.
And 12 inches from a curb cut.
12 inches from?
12 inches from a curb cut and four feet from, 48 inches from a sidewalk.
I'd be surprised if that is true then, you know, in this particular site, but that should be verified, yeah.
It was, you have other questions, but whether or not there's any variance is being requested from Massachusetts State Code or doesn't sound like, it's a knowledge of requirements.
As I said, Narragansett Elect, National Grid permits the pole. I assume they permitted it properly. We're just attaching to it.
So that pole that clears already in?
That pole's already in.
But it's for a different purpose.
No, it's... Well, it's the same purpose.
This is, this is an application process for, for a small wireless facility. The state code applies differently than it does an electrical pole. There's different state code.
Yeah, we're not putting anything on the ground.
There's, there's a different state code for the installation of a small wireless facility than there is for an electrical pole.
Good.
So to use it for that purpose, the requirements of the state code have to be met. And I wouldn't maybe trust that National Grid, I think, would have to present that for us.
Mark, is a building official involved in this for a final approval or not?
He gets a copy of the materials. They're circulated to all the department heads and other boards.
Does he have to sign off on it, though?
Good question. I think he would, yes.
I have two questions. One is, if you move the pole over to 2478, you would extend greater coverage to the fairly dense neighborhoods on the other side of Bay Road. And the people that would lose out would be the sort of tail end on Walnut Street, the improvements in coverage. And I think you'd actually improve coverage for more people or more households by moving it from 943 to 2478. I'm guessing if you actually did, if you, you know, count up the number of houses and buildings, I think there's considerably more historical development over on, in this frame, the left side of Bay Road than down along Walnut. So if your objective is to, to extend the most coverage to the most people, then I think that move might actually be beneficial. The second point I think is pretty obvious. You're going to replace a 24-foot wooden pole with a 40-foot wooden pole. We're not looking at a large aluminum, you know, tower pole that, from the aesthetic point of view, people would find quite objectionable. It's a, you know, a lower-key wooden pole. In any case, it's just taller.
It would be.
That's right.
Correct. It's wood for wood, yeah. Exactly what we did in this instance. We went from whatever they are, Class 2 to a Class 4 pole.
So I think that certainly is, minimizes the offensiveness of the pole. But I, I really do think that you'd capture, you'd improve coverage for more people by moving it down to 2478. That's something...
I mean, we appreciate the input. We're satisfied with where we are, but if the board insists that we look at 20...
That would be my guess.
We're, we're just trying to comply with your bylaw. You say minimize visual impact. We think we did that.
Yeah, that's probably true. It would be a little more visually...
Yes, it would be.
Standing right there at the corner, yeah.
But there's so much stuff there anyway. There's a gate crossing and some other transportation stuff.
It's always this, it's always this subjective back and forth. Well, you know, what looks better, what looks, you know...
You can go to the podium and, when the attorney is completed, of course, of course, of course.
I had a couple, referring back to the state code.
Yeah, I haven't, I'll have to look at it because I have no...
It's pretty horrid in what they're requiring. Concrete pad.
For what now?
For the structure.
For the pole?
Yep. Mowers to be encased in conduit. There's...
What's, could you give me a sighting on the code?
Yeah, it's 302 CMR 19, small wireless facilities. And it's referenced in our bylaw to follow and refer to state code in addition to whatever is outlined.
State, oh, state electrical code?
State building code.
Building code.
Yeah. And then in addition to the electrical code that you just referenced, there's other requirements that NFPA puts forward in maintaining electric equipment that I'd like to see included as part of, if this goes through some kind of conditional approval to ensure that the arc flash studies and infrared testing and breaker testing and that maintenance program, we're applied to electrical equipment that were installed on the pole. But I think it's worth fingering through that state code because it has a lot of the requirements that are shown. And maybe it doesn't apply, I'm not...
I'll get our, I'll get our engineers to get you a, some kind of compliance.
There was a civil engineer stamping electrical drawings and things like that. And I guess it would probably be a good idea if we had an electrical engineer review that, just ensure that, again, the requirements of those codes being referenced are followed because, you know, not every engineer is created equal.
And we typically find, we typically find we need a building permit after our special permit. We need an electrical permit. Those may be done there, so, but I'll get you confirmation. Other questions from?
So Pat, are you recommending that the planning board condition approval on a peer review of?
I don't, I don't know if it means that. I just want to, if that is an applicable code to refer to, there's a bunch of things that aren't shown as evidence that's being met. So I guess first let's check to make sure that that code you reference applies to the diligence, to the installation. And if it, and if it does, then maybe, not maybe a third party, but just an updated set of drawings that confirm that it's being, that the code's being met.
Right. Did you have a code section in our bylaw that references the?
Well, 7.3 is the...
Right.
7.3 just says follow, you know, it's our generic, follow state, follow applicable state. And it refers to NFPA and a few other codes generically. So it doesn't specifically call out the one I'm referencing.
Right.
But when you search up, it's just this building code for small wireless facilities, that's the section I mentioned.
Right. And so it's specific... Yeah. And so it specifically references small wireless facilities. And so I don't know if that federal law would preempt that, but I would think that if Mass General Laws has a specific provision with respect to small wireless facilities, that they, that it would apply. That it probably is in sync with whatever the federal requirements are.
We'll get you satisfied that we comply because this might be the first in Hamilton, but I've done hundreds of these. So we do them in the public right-of-way, never run into an issue. We pull electrical permits, we pull building permits. I just can't say, here's your certification. I don't even have a structural that's, I'll get you the structural. We'll get you satisfied on the compliance issues, on the building code, the electrical code, and we'll go from there.
Okay. You can work with Mr. Connors. I'm sure he will...
I'll just the building commissioner to bring him up with him, if that's helpful.
Yes. And, and I think there's some other folks who would like to speak.
Of course.
Thank you. And you will have an opportunity to respond and answer their questions.
You can do whatever you like.
Please approach the podium and identify yourselves and your address for the record.
I live, I'm Stephanie Casabian, and I live at 18 Walnut Road. Hi. So, and all three of us, our homes are right adjacent to the site. In fact, they were all pictured in your photos. So it is in the visual sightline of our houses. And I know my house, it's across from Crosby's. I have two telephone poles and three signs in front of it right now. And the new pole itself is not bad. It's been replaced already. But my question is, did you say there's going to be a humming noise from the box?
There's electronic equipment in the, but there's no cooling element. So it's just like you were standing next to a computer.
Well, there's going to be a box attached to it.
True.
And an antenna on the top that's going to be 24 inches higher. Well, to me, it seems like it would be much better, the alternate site, 2478, that's in the railroad crossing where no one lives. There's actually no three homes right around it. And, because to us, it's a visual impact. And even one of your other proposed sites where you said there's no vegetation and no people around, that would seem more, more appropriate than right next to our three houses. And there's a shopping center across the street. Why couldn't it go in the shopping center even? Or in back of the police station? I know you're looking for telephone poles, but I don't really see why it's got to be in front of a residential home that's already got a lot of equipment.
Well, it's not in front of the home. It's on the property line. So you're, you know, I did take a ride by because I saw your comment and, you know, 18, your 18, 24, I believe, is right next to it.
And she's directly across. I know. And, you know, it's quite large, and I, I just don't want any additional antennas or boxes with humming noises and radio frequencies coming from it. I mean, it's not, it's very close to the house. I mean, I know it's close to the street, but the homes are not that far back. It's a city lot.
Can I ask over?
Certainly.
24 Walnut.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
The wire, 24 Walnut Road, neighbor to Stephanie.
On the other side of the driveway.
So, could you speak into the microphone, please?
I would just like you to state again, you said there was no visual impacts, that, that this would be hidden by foliage. So I don't really know what you're referencing when you say that, that this would be covered up and wouldn't be exposed. I can see this pole right out my front window. Okay? Let me finish. You had your time. So there is a major visual impact, okay? The pole itself, when it was put in by National Grid, came to Stephanie and I and told us it was being replaced not to facilitate your wireless home, but because they were concerned about the wire that went over the street that supported it. So we're feeling like a little bait and switch here. On the National Grid came in, they had an arborist knock on our door, say, hey, we want to replace this pole. We're concerned because of the catenary effect of the cable going across. It's not tight enough. We really want to replace this pole for that reason. Then we get this in the mail, right?
And they had to take down a tree to do it also.
So the tree in your picture is no longer there, okay? So there is no foliage surrounding this pole anymore. There's, there's none. So if we got you an updated picture, you would see no foliage. Did the pole move back a little? Yes, I believe it did. I don't know, probably like minuscule, six inches, but to your, to your point about traffic, okay, we already have a traffic problem. All the deliveries come out of that back alley, okay? To the point where they park on the street there, okay? And I will tell you right now that when I back out of my driveway, I've had people go around the truck that's parked in front of Janey's house and almost sideswipe me because they don't have the patience to wait. Because now we've made it three lanes. So your point about the traffic being safety, that it's not a safety concern, that the other side would be a safety concern by the road tracks, is unfounded.
Okay.
There's more traffic, there's more traffic in that alleyway than anywhere else I think on Walnut.
And it's a service alley behind the shopping center. Truck's are here all day.
Well, this is important that you're speaking.
Right, so the visual impact...
Bringing something to our attention.
Right. The visual impact, we've already had to live with. If the development of 15 Walnut, this board was probably not in place, right? So that's all right. But we've already had visual impacts that weren't addressed at the planning board level when 15 Walnut, the restaurant was put in.
Right.
Right? And I'll just make a little side note on that. That, during the planning board session, that was located in the front that was located in the front, right? So we wouldn't hear the noise, it's actually located closest to the parking lot and away from 15 Walnut, Walnut Street. It ended up right next to our home, right? I mean, that's where it ends up in the zoning. So I have major concerns on not just, not just the location and visual impacts, but also the maintenance impacts, okay? Because as time goes on, you know, things fall apart, this thing's going to gray, it's going to, it's going to look shabby, no one's going to come and paint it, okay? Luckily, we recently complained to the new owners of the 15 Walnut, that, you know, they're supposed to have all their equipment enclosed, and they were kind enough to actually replace the fencing around their fan, but I'm, we're going through a problem with Cumberland Farms right now, has a door that's swinging and banging, right? And we have no recourse. I've been to the building department, they said call the police department.
We have a noise ordinance, you know.
What?
We have a noise ordinance.
I know, but it's intermittent because it's due to wind, so it's only when the wind blows, so what, are you going to call the police every time? So I'm very concerned that although the zoning board is very effective, when it's finally put in, we have no recourse, right? We have no recourse to get anything put, so I'm looking at this panel, first of all, if it's got power, it's going to hum, right? There's a transformer, you showed a power transformer, right? From probably 120 to 224. Well, the meter makes noise, so you can't tell me, I think this, this gray panel is probably the most obtrusive thing in this whole thing, right? Maybe the proposed antenna on the top, but I'd, I'd love to, that, so a lot of that vegetation is no longer there, okay? I know, because I'm the one maintaining it.
Yeah, that's John's house, and my house is the one on the other side, or it's front and center, right in front of us.
So to tell me there's no visual impact is, is absolutely ridiculous, could I see the, the alternative?
Well, don't say no impact, we thought to minimize it.
You said, if I were to go verbatim, you said this is a non-residential area, we feel it is better, because it also, you called it a non-residential area? You sat up here and said?
It is a residential area, I understand it's a residential, where in residential zoning district, right between the two properties, there are two residences.
Right, but you called it a non-residential area, that the, that the alternative site wouldn't be, is the same because it's not as residential. How can you say this is not a residential area? We pay residential taxes, but can we look at the alternative, alternative sites? Because I have some questions that you could field possibly on these.
Yeah, the train crossing, there are residents living there, 24 hours.
Right.
It's, it's a train crossing.
I mean, I'd really, I really hope the zoning board takes our comments into consideration.
I re, I repeat my, I'd like to repeat my observation, I do not see why it is not in the interest of AT&amp;T to move it down to Bay Road, in terms of if they're actually trying to provide, you know, better service to as many people as possible, there's more people over on the other side of Bay Road than there are on the side where you are, and, and.
More.
All those neighborhoods on the left would get better access, and they're really, you can see, there's just mostly woods on either, as you go north and south around Walnut Street. I don't think you're going to lose any people there, you're going to get a lot more on the other side.
I'd like to add one of it.
I, I think we've, we've covered a lot of bases here, and I think at the bottom line is that we will be seeing you at another meeting.
I have, I have another question, you decided that from a radial point of view, that 94384 is closer than 1070 or 1071 to your epicenter? I don't, just diagrammatically, that, it's not true, 1070 and 1071 is equidistant from your radius, from your diameter than we are. So there, to say that those sites don't make sense, I mean, that's okay, I wouldn't want to push that on to my neighbors either, so I don't think those are valid, but I'm really wondering about 836, okay? There aren't a lot of accidents down in that, by 2478, 836 is on the other side.
2478.
I don't understand why that's not the logical place.
That's not bad.
Not a bad place.
Why, why not?
Did you spell that?
Commercial properties.
No, we don't even have, so we don't even have this, we don't have a record of this at all, his memorandum or anything.
This is the 22 sites that we eliminated. 836 is not available.
Okay, so.
Yeah, but 2478.
2478 would be.
And then I'm just curious from the planning board about, I understood that they talked about 15 Walnut, the owners of that, talked about a microgrid in there, the potential of a microgrid, is what I've heard, so.
It hasn't been before the planning board.
Yeah, that, maybe it's not coming from, in front of the planning board yet, but also the police station, the safety building, had a proposed cell tower that never got built, that was approved, I thought it was approved seven years ago, I thought it was actually built, I just learned, and I'd love to know why that, why would we impact this pole in us and not put up the cell tower that I thought that our town could actually collect money from? And I don't even know, are we getting any income from this, or is National Grid getting income from this, right? I mean, I don't understand why the cell tower didn't get built, and why that's not, you know, an alternative to this, I'm very, I'm really, really confused on that.
Well.
Just tell you that a little background, there was an RFP, the town issued, about nine years ago, and it went to cell phone providers for a potential tower either at the town hall, behind town hall, or at the public safety complex, and for whatever reason, I wasn't here when it, but it was decided to go at the town hall location, so that tower was eventually built, so it was sort of an either/or situation, it wasn't both.
So that's not providing service, or that doesn't cover, AT&amp;T is not utilizing that tower as one of their sites?
I'm not sure what provider it is, but it's.
It's Verizon Tower, but it is, it's 1.3 miles from this location.
Yeah.
Should still, on a, on a, on a large cell phone tower, provide coverage if you're, if you're on.
Yeah, that's, that's the issue with, that's the issue. That's the issue with these small wireless. Small wireless devices, you're going to get one every mile or down the road, so this might be the first of many, I guess, but.
Right, well, let's.
We should get the facts.
You should, well, I would ask you, so, looking into the 12, help me here, 2478, I think that is something that, that the planning board would recommend that you do for the reasons stated by Mr. Whedon, and also for the reasons stated by the butters, I think that's.
Also make the point that if we're not collecting revenue off this, why don't they lease the land from someone and put up their own, and follow the state building codes for the footing, do it the right way and not piggyback on National Grid? Because we were baiting switches.
I may have missed this, I don't know, but my name is Jane O'Connor, and I'm across the street from this facility. Tell me what the purpose of this is.
Is to provide coverage for AT&amp;T customers.
Our cell phones.
Cell phones, oh, I'm sorry, AT&amp;T mobility customers.
Yes, so you want to have it where there are more people.
Generally.
And that's why I would agree that they should move it, I mean, you should install it where there are many more people, we are just a couple of us, we have to look at it, we may have a problem with that being repaired and whatnot, but I just wanted to know, you want to be where there are a lot.
Madam Chair, I just. Madam Chair, I'd just like to add, make one.
All right, we've, we've heard your concerns, and, and we have advised accordingly.
I just wanted to say that I did study the alternative areas and the proposed areas, not carefully, but, you know, in a reasonable way, and my observation is there's a lot more visual noise in the Crosby's parking lot where the alternative site is than where it's being proposed, so even though it might not be buried in vegetation, the visual noise that would tend to mask this as a structure, I think there's enough going on there that it's, it's probably less visually, you know, and again, this is subjective, but there is more visual noise, this is a true statement, there's more visual noise in that region where the alternative pole is there than where it's being proposed, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, so we had some other questions that you're going to address, and I believe that, I'm assuming that you agreed to look into this other pole location.
We will.
And then consult with Mr. Connors, and we'll invite you back, and so at this juncture, because of our pretty heavy agenda, I will entertain a motion to continue the public hearing on this wireless, small wireless facility until, do you, Mike, can you suggest?
You, you should establish a date, though.
Yeah, we do need to establish a date, yeah.
If I understood you correctly, you're saying that the incremental visual noise.
It will be less visible by, by the railroad crossing than in front of your house.
Thank you.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes.
But I. Yes, but, but I was saying it's stated from the point of view of not which is more attractive, but it's a fact, there's more visual noise, which means it is less likely to be noticeable, but it's, it's subjective.
Shall I make a motion?
We need a date.
Oh, that's right, that's a good one.
What, plain amendment?
Yeah. I think what was stated, that there's nothing on the pole now. Oh. Electrical lines, I, I, it was my understanding that they were removed, but I could be wrong.
Sure. Mark, it's looking like May 20th.
May 20th? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I move that we continue this hearing and process on May 20th.
Do I have a second?
I second that.
So when I call your name, would you please indicate your ascent? Pat Norden?
Pat Norden, aye.
Jonathan Poor?
Jonathan Poor, aye.
Bill Whedon?
Bill Whedon, aye.
Darcy Dale?
Darcy Dale, aye.
Amel Dahlquist?
Amel Dahlquist, aye.
And Marnie Crouch, aye.
Thanks.
Thank you all for your information and your input, and I hope we can resolve this for everyone's, to everyone's satisfaction. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the public hearing on the amendments to Section 9.2, the floodplain overlay district. Mike, could you please read that?
Sure.
Public notice.
Bear with me one minute.
Can we also shut that door, because I think it makes it really chilly in here.
Yeah, so much for a short reading.
Thanks.
Can we also shut that door, because I think it makes it really chilly in here.
Yeah, so much for a short reading.
Thanks.
Uh, notices hereby provided that the Hamilton Planning Board will conduct a public hearing pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 5, for consideration of proposed amendments to Hamilton's zoning bylaw. Public hearing will be on Tuesday, April 1st, 2025, at 6:00 PM in the main meeting room of the Hamilton Venom Public Library, 14 Union Street in Hamilton. This hearing will be held in person with Zoom electronic login access provided as a courtesy. However, the meeting will not be terminated in the event that technological issues disrupt the Zoom broadcast, the Zoom meeting login information will be included on the April 1st planning board agenda. Members of the public are invited to be heard regarding the following proposed zoning bylaw amendments, to amend Section 9.2 floodplain overlay district and Section 11 definitions by amending provisions related to floodplains and associated uses, requirements, administration, and definitions, renumbering remaining language, and replacing the existing flood insurance rate maps with new maps provided by the Federal Emergency Management Agency. The purpose of this amendment is to ensure conformance of the recently updated Essex County Flood Insurance Study and the FEMA Flood Insurance Rate Maps. The full text of the bylaw amendments are reviewed at the Town Clerk's Office, Patton Homestead, 650 Asbury Street during regular business hours, or by visiting the Hamilton Planning Board webpage.
Okay, do any planning board members have any comments with respect to this bylaw?
Just to give a little bit of background, this is something that the federal government requires towns that are covered through the federal flood insurance program to do, since the FEMA flood rate maps have been updated, so the town has a six-month window in which we have to amend the zoning to, to account for this. I think just about every town or city in Essex County is doing this, if you look at other proposed zoning bylaw amendments, you'll see every town is updating their FEMA maps to do this. The Mass DCR is the body that administers the flood insurance program for Massachusetts, so they've reviewed the proposed changes, and they're satisfied with them.
Mark, did you, did you draft this?
I did, yes, they told me the sections I would have to change, so I did that.
So did you follow a particular template that they gave you?
They gave me a model zoning bylaw, yes.
So I had very minor comments with respect to this, so if you, if you bear with me. So in, on page two of our materials, in Section 9.2.2, there's a reference to the National Flood Insurance Program, and I think right here, we need to add a paren, NFIP, because NFIP, that abbreviation appears in Section 2.2, I'm sorry, Section 9.2.8, .3, and .4, and when I read this, I was like, what does that stand for? And then I realized it was set forth in 9.2.2, and then again, in Section 9.2.11, the National Flood Insurance Program, the abbreviation is put in parentheses, so that abbreviation just has to be moved to 9.2.2, and then it can be used without reference to the full National Flood Insurance Program in 9.2.11. Do you follow me?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
And then the, in 9.2.5.2, there's a reference to the floodplain overlay district, floodplain needs to be two words, and floodplain overlay district should be capitalized. And then the only, I think, other question I had was in Section 9.2.5.10, it says in A zones, in the absence of FEMA. in the absence of FEMA, BFE. That, I believe, stands for base floodplain elevation, and I believe that should be written out.
Yes, you're correct.
And those were the only comments that I had.
Mark, are the zoning maps changing also? Are they getting reassessed as part of this? Referred a lot to, obviously, the different zones. Um, is that our town's responsibility to maintain the zones and get them assessed?
No, they don't.
Or is that?
It's never been on the official...
Federal.
So, yes, the federal maps are changing.
Requirement.
So the maps that are references in the bylaw are changing essentially, but not our official zoning map?
Not the official zoning map?
Yes.
Got it.
So, Hamilton is not responsible for changing any maps in conjunction with the amendment to this bylaw? Good. I note for the record that our associate members are here. Welcome. Matt Hamel, Jeff Austin.
So is, uh, along those lines, Mark, then the master plan floodplain districts are adequate for, in the master plan, do you know?
I think so. I'll check, I'll have to check the language, but I don't think they would, unless they reference the old maps specifically.
Any other questions or comments?
Is FEMA going to be, um, never mind.
Never mind. Right. This might be an exercise in futility, but hopefully not.
Can I make a motion that we approve this bylaw amendment as amended this evening with the corrections from Marnie Crouch to present to the town meeting?
Yes.
Second.
Question, just, is there any, any public who wants to speak?
Oh, yes, anybody.
Anybody online that?
Thank you for that.
If anyone would like to speak on the floodplain overlay district changes, please raise your hand.
Oh, this one didn't generate any controversy. Well, I mean, my understanding is without these amendments, people could be at risk of not being eligible for insurance.
Not being eligible for flood insurance, absolutely.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's really important, and I would think that if anyone wanted to speak, it would be in favor. So with that, we'll take a roll call vote. Pat Norden?
Pat Norden, aye.
Jonathan Poor?
Jonathan Poor, aye.
Bill Wheaton?
Bill Wheaton, aye.
Darcy Dale?
Darcy Dale, aye.
Amal Dalquist, aye.
Thank you. And Marnie Crouch, aye. So, since we are considering bylaw amendments, if no members have any objection, I would like to revisit the GPOD for a minute. And I sent around a memorandum with respect to the questions that arose at the Select Board meeting with respect to the language of our amended, our amendment to the GPOD. And we spoke with Robyn Stein about that, and she provided us with some advice. But the long story short is that our proposed amendment to the GPOD will have no effect on individuals with single-family homes or multifamily homes in the GPOD. In other words, if you are in the GPOD, and more likely than not, the GPOD was enacted after your house was built, if you exist, if you have a house in the GPOD on a lot that's less than 80,000 square feet, that is a pre-existing, non-conforming use and structure. And if you were to make changes or demolish your home, your remedies would be under Section 5.0 of our zoning bylaw, or potentially Section 9.1.1. But our bylaw amendment would have no effect whatsoever on individual property owners who are, to some extent, maybe grandfathered in to the GPOD. So I don't know if any other members had an opportunity to look into this or to think about it, but I, I did spend some time looking into this issue, and I spoke with Robyn Stein later this afternoon, and, and that is my thought on this matter. And, and it does make sense because the, the, the development in the GPOD that we are aware of, Canterbury Brook and Patton Ridge, those were senior housing special permits. And the thinking was that the, the lots were in excess of 80,000 square feet, ergo, you could have more than the allocation that you would have under the, in the, in the underlying district. So for example, I looked at Canterbury Brook, and Canterbury Brook was 14 acres. It was in the R1B zoning district, one acre, well, one house per 20, 40,000 square feet. So arguably, without the GPOD, you could have 14 units. And under our amendment to the bylaw, you would probably have seven units. Because of the way the bylaw is written now, when the senior housing special permit was issued, the planning board at that time said, well, there could be 13 single-family houses, and then they applied density bonuses under the senior housing bylaw to come up with 23 units on that 14-acre site. And so our amendment to the bylaw would not allow that to happen, because in some senses, it doesn't make any sense why you would allow greater density in the GPOD than you could ever have under the underlying zoning. But as I said before, our amendment would not affect anyone with a single-family home. It would only be for multi-residential development. And then the other issue, and I don't know whether this will happen or not, but if anyone attended the Select Board meeting, not this past week, but the week before, Mark Johnson did indicate that he intended to propose an amendment to the GPOD at town meeting. And so I, I did reproduce what he said, and I, I don't know if anyone has any comments or any reaction to that. And I, it's on page two at the top of the page. And again, I don't know whether he will follow three through on this, but he said at the Select Board meeting that he would propose, and I quote, "Any proposed development that falls within the GPOD which has more than four dwelling units per 80,000 square feet of land shall be required by the applicable permitting authority to use an engineered septic system so that the town's groundwater is properly protected."
I would just say that, to reiterate, the proposed, our proposed amendment to the GPOD bylaw, in my experience of the history of the bylaw, is a correction, really not a revision. It's a correction. So you could debate that. I don't have, I don't have a physical copy of the original bylaw, the way it was written, but I have seen it. You know, I just don't have the physical copy. And then, so, so, and that original writing of the bylaw was based on, basically, an engineering consulting study, you know, and, and crafting the, the bylaw based on engineering analysis. And this proposed amendment to our correction appears to be rather random and lacks performance standards. You know, it's random numbers and it's, and there's no performance standard to the, the requirement for the alternative septic system. So I don't see the basis to entertain this, this amendment to our correction.
I would agree with that.
All septic systems?
I completely agree with that.
Yes.
There's no special requirement. Every single septic system is engineered.
Yes.
It, it, it just lacks sort of scientific rigor or basis.
The whole thing is completely arbitrary. And, you know, we did have the discussion about following up at some point soon, about investigating the entire, and I think that's the appropriate time to reevaluate it, if that's going to be necessary, but...
Right now, we want to make the correction.
We want to make the correction, and just, this just simply flies in the face of the whole intent.
It's illogical, the way that the wording was changed.
Right.
Well, as I pointed out, where that amendment would fit within the existing GPOD is I believe...
Is he planning on making this amendment from the floor?
Well, he stated that he would, but whether he follows through is another issue. But he's adamant. He does not like our proposed amendment one bit, because he's got a YouTube, not a YouTube, but he has a video on Facebook on the Hamilton Wenham Community Forum. So we'll see what happens at town meeting.
I actually probably know the answer to this, but are each of these amendments voted on separately, or are they all in one, like, could the controversy around this one update torpedo the other updates?
Oh, no, no, no.
Are they all voted on separately?
They're separate articles. And in fact, just for your information, the amendments to Section 3.0 of the bylaw have been separated out, because the amendment to Section 3.6, the ADUs as of right, the ones that are the result of the Affordable Homes Act, they only require a majority of vote at town meeting. All the other changes that the, the planning board is recommending to Section 3.0 require two-thirds vote. But I note that with respect to all the proposed amendments, except for the GPOD, both the Select Board and the FINCOM voted unanimously to approve our proposed amendments. So the only proposed amendment that might garner any discussion at town meeting is the proposed amendment to the GPOD.
Thanks.
So there's no action that we need to take with respect to this, so unless there's any further comment, or comment from the public or anyone online, we can move on. So the next item on our agenda is the preliminary discussion of the MBTA Communities Compliance Zoning and Associated Design Guidelines.
Preliminary discussion?
Preliminary code discussion.
Code, sorry. Sorry.
How many slides you got, Amal?
Eight, I don't have any.
130?
Hey there, everyone. Nice to meet you all. Some of you we've seen already through our process up until this point. I'm Zoe Mueller. I've served as the project manager for our team as we've been working with the town on this. And Matthew Latell is, is serving us tech support now, but is in fact principal in charge for this effort. And so we'll walk you through where we are. And then as a follow-up to this meeting, we will be sharing the full draft code for you all to review in detail. All right. Thank you, Mark, for serving as a slide advancer. All right, so if you don't mind going to the next slide here.
Would you speak a little more into the mic?
Yes. Is that better?
I wondered, is it, could they, could they turn the PA system up? Really, nobody can hear anybody in here.
She said she turned it up as high as she can, but the fan is competing. She says we can't change the fan because the town, Wenham controls it.
Okay, so everybody will just have to speak, speak, just speak loudly.
Okay, I'll do my best. Please prompt me if I'm, if I'm trailing off a bit, okay?
That's better when you get closer.
All right. Any better?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, so this is just to give you a sense of how we're going to move through this today. I'm inclined to suggest that we move through all of the slides and then return for discussion, just so you can see the big picture. But if there are clarification questions along the way, please jump in, just to make sure that you're comprehending it as we're moving through. So if you want to go to slide three, this, and I think maybe zoom out just a little bit, we're not seeing quite the whole slide. Perfect. Apologies for if it's a little hard to read. I'll do a little slight adjustment here to see if we can get it just right. Okay, perfect. Thank you, Mark. Okay, so this just gives you the long view of the process that we've been engaging in. We started working with the town of Hamilton in April of last year, and we moved through sort of a intensive process to do some of the early-stage work to identify goals, hear from members of the town about the, what they wanted, the scale of development, et cetera. We heard from all sides. Over the course of that sort of initial period, we formed the vast majority of what you'll see here tonight. But then we did advise the town and through the Select Board, decided to take the project and put it on pause while awaiting clarity and a decision from the Supreme Judicial Court around the MBTA Communities law and the enforcement and application of that law throughout the Commonwealth. So that clarity was provided as we kind of moved from January into February of this year. And so with that information in hand, we reinitiated the process, resuming and taking advantage of all the work that was done in that initial phase. So this sort of has been guided in two different sort of phases with two different sets of people, but there's been continuity across the two, and we hope to discuss with you today where we are and hear your feedback. Slide four. Oh, I should just mention, we are working towards a state-designated compliance deadline of July 14th. That means we're on a pretty accelerated timeline to get this to town meeting. So the, we're anticipating a June 26th town meeting, which means that we would need to get to a final warrant by the beginning of June. And so we're expecting the next two months to be kind of an intensive work period with you all. And we'll return to that kind of at the end of the meeting to figure out some of the logistics of that and confirm specific meeting dates, et cetera. Okay, so this just gives you a slightly more granular view, looking at the next two months. Today, we're going to present to you an overview of the draft code, all of the key parameters that we intend to include, the sub-districts, the relationships, all of that, so that you can then read the full draft code with that conceptual framework in mind, and with any clarification questions that you need from us today. So we will then be sharing with you on this, I think on Thursday of this week, we will be able to share with you a full draft code for your review. And then we'll want to come back to you to hear your feedback on that, at that more detailed level. Then we'll move through another cycle to get a revised code, one more cycle after that to get to a final code. So three more.
And this is form-based code you're talking about?
We started out the process looking at this from a form-based perspective, and we still have a lot of dimensional parameters embedded in the town center portion of this. I'll get into this in just a moment, but this, this effort includes both zoning for the town center, which would replace your current zoning, as well as one district outside of the town center that would be an overlay district that would be complementary to your existing.
What kind of overlay?
What kind of overlay?
That one would be a more conventional overlay district that is primarily focused on the densities that would be allowed and the number of units.
So you're talking about 3A?
Both this entire effort, at this point, we are bringing to you as an opportunity to both rezone the town center and one portion outside of the town center that would together be able to meet the requirements of the state under MBTA Communities, also known as 3A.
Marty, I thought we were focusing on form-based code and we were putting off 3A.
I think we should wait and go through the presentation and then have a full discussion.
Okay.
So I think with that question in mind, I'll move to the next piece. So if you go to Slide 5, this is really just kind of a bridge. We want to give you a sense of, that was the process, really. Now I'm going to give you a sense of the overall approach, which includes addressing your question around the relationship of this to MBTA Communities and 3A. If you go to Slide 6, this is a diagram just to help understand the relationship between the two. This includes a series of town center zoning sub-districts that are guided by form-based principles that address a lot of the feedback that we heard specifically around the kinds of building forms that people wanted to see in the downtown, and the different uses and use mixes that they wanted to see in different parts of the town. There are three of these sub-districts, which I will show you a map in just a moment, the Bay Road mixed use, the Willow Street mixed use, and the downtown residential sub-districts that, as drawn, and I'll show you diagrams in a moment, can contribute towards meeting the requirements of the MBTA Communities Act, also known as Section 3A, if combined with a single outlying district beyond the town center that is located along Asbury. I'll get into that in just a moment, so you can see the specific areas we're talking about. We have also, over the course of this effort, considered two other possibilities for outlying districts, the Gordon Conwell Theological Seminary, as well as Tobacco Road. After further analysis, we have eliminated both of those for different reasons, and are focusing on Asbury as what we think is the best complement to your town center sub-districts to reach those requirements and be as close as possible to the values that we've been hearing thus far in the process. So I think this, you know, I know it's a kind of an unsatisfying answer in that these are still intertwined, but I want to emphasize that the town center districts have, throughout the process, been informed specifically by the feedback we've been hearing around physical form, size, scale, et cetera. And if 3A is not pursued, those could move forward on their own without the 3A requirements in future town meetings as a sort of more focused effort that is not specific to 3A at this time. For the sake of pursuing and enabling the town meeting members to vote on an option for compliance, we are showing a way to do that, what we think is the best possible way to achieve that within the constraints of what we've heard from people in Hamilton and the requirements that have been set by the state. I imagine we'll return to that later, so I'm going to keep moving through the rest, and we'll expect to kind of return to that as needed. Okay, the next piece I wanted to zoom into is to help people understand where we are with the town center zoning sub-districts themselves. You'll see on this map a black outline, though that contains the three sub-districts of the town center that can contribute towards the 3A requirements. The two districts that you see in red and in blue, those are the, what we're calling Depot Square mixed use, which revolves around Hamilton Crossing and Railroad Avenue, as well as Bay Road Civic, which includes the Senior Center and Public Safety Building along Bay Road. Neither of those contribute to 3A in any way. The formal standards for those two districts have no relationship to 3A.
So these areas total up to 30 acres, because you're going to have 19 up at Willow Street, is that? How much land is that?
Sounds about right. I don't remember the numbers offhand, do you recall?
I don't, but we'll get to the details a little bit later.
Okay, next slide here. This shows you the state 3A compliance requirements for Hamilton specifically, and the three outlying sites in relationship to the town center. You'll see that Asbury, we've highlighted with that number 1, that is the one that we're suggesting moves forward as part of this effort. And on the left, you can see the metrics that have been set at the state level, including a portion of these zoning districts that need to fall within the station area, within half a mile of the station area. So your town center districts are the ones contributing towards that portion of the requirements that have been set at the state level. Next slide. One of the reasons why we have focused on Asbury is the interaction of the other two sites with your overlay districts, namely the groundwater protection overlay district, which was just discussed earlier, as well as the commercial overlay district. In particular, for Tobacco Road, which I'll get into in a moment, the combination of these two really rendered that site, as well as its town ownership rendered that site unrealistic as a way of meeting the state's requirements. And then secondarily, Gordon Conwell had different issues, that I'll go into in just a moment, that made us choose not to pursue that one. Next slide.
Can you define the address?
Yeah, it'll come in two slides, it'll be a map. So the first, just to get people, I know that last time, for those of you who've been tracking this process, when we last left off, we were considering Tobacco Road as part of this effort. The reasons we have chosen to eliminate it at this point is that it is town-owned, which is generally not considered developable by the state for housing unless it is explicitly named as a site for future housing production. You have it named in your housing production plan, but because of the commercial overlay district and the groundwater protection overlay district, which each subject that site to different requirements that are in conflict with future multifamily housing, we do not think that this is a site the state would accept as a site that contributes to housing production for Hamilton. Next slide. Gordon Conwell is a site that we've talked about at length. This has different interactions. It does also, it is also within the groundwater protection overlay district, and it has, it is institutionally owned currently. We all know that it is in the process of, you know, pursuing a sale to private ownership, but the timelines are not aligned, and so long as it is institutionally owned under the current emergency regulations from the state, it is not admissible as developable land. That's may change in the future. We also know that there is some concern around the interaction with 40B. There's a desire to negotiate an affordable housing commitment above 10% for this site. The state requirements would only allow that if an economic feasibility study demonstrated that it was possible to deliver that 25% or above of affordable housing on this site without sort of tanking the whole project. So that one we've eliminated for now, which brings us to Asbury. These are the two sites that we have identified as potential sites that can contribute in this way to the overall approach. You can see here in the sort of number dots, the existing and planned units for each of these sites. The one that has a 23 number dot on it is a current condo development. The one that has a 46 over it is a 40B that is moving forward into construction on that site. For that reason, given the existing and proposed uses on this site, we feel this is a good candidate for contributing to your 3A requirements, given that it already has multifamily development existing, and there is some security that, in the near term, these are not likely to be redeveloped under these rules, so that you can expect to have, over the arc of the sort of next 50 years, to sort of have any potential impacts to the town in terms of future housing production spread out in a way that is more manageable.
I got a quick question. GPOD on this land, you have lot size?
Yes.
Would the amendment change in the zoning bylaws affect you significantly?
Yes. So this is something that we should discuss a little bit. It's something, we'll take it as it comes. Obviously, this is, the groundwater protection overlay district is, the amendments that are being considered will interact with these proposals. There is some precedent with other communities we've worked with, and in our collaborations with the state around addressing these kinds of interactions, which many, many communities have, that we think we can finesse this issue, we can come up with a solution that's going to work in this particular site. Because of the sensitivity in Tobacco Road, for instance, you know, its proximity to water supply, et cetera, we did not think it was realistic to overcome in that setting, but we do think that we can come up with some solutions that can finesse that issue in this location. I know you've been looking into this in greater detail, so feel free to chime in if I've missed something.
We'll get to it.
Okay. So we'll wrap up to that at the end, some of the ways that we've started to write through the ways to manage that interaction, and obviously, if the amendment moves forward, we'd have to address that in a different way. It would be harder to overcome with the amendment that's being considered, but we'll, again, we'll take it as it comes, we'll figure it out. Okay. That's it for the kind of the outlying sites. We wanted to help you kind of get grounded in that, because that, these sort of outlying sites are the piece of the puzzle that enables us to zone for the town center in a way that is as aligned as possible with what we've been hearing, while having them still contribute to the state compliance requirements.
I noticed that there's existing planned units, 69. Is that in addition to the 40 that are going to be there already?
No, that is a combination of, so the 23 is the number of condo units that are built already on the site where you can see those building footprints.
Is that Brook?
Yes.
23, okay.
And then the 46 number, that is the anticipated number of units that have been permitted for the 40B that is on the site that is immediately adjacent. Those aren't built yet, but they're moving into construction now.
So the 69, the planned, the existing or planned units is the combination of 23 and 46, you're saying?
Exactly, yep. So that's not a zoning metric, that's more for the purpose of comparing to what's there today and what will be there in the near future.
Just to be blunt about it, this district was chosen because it's very unlikely there'd be development here, because 46 has been approved already for a affordable housing development, and 23 is a condo development. It's difficult to redevelop a condo development, you have to buy out all the owners.
Yes.
And 1 is not completed yet, correct? Is that the...
The 40B, the one that has the 46 on it there.
Across the street, it's the 1 right there.
Habitat for Humanity?
Yeah, that's not...
Those are, correct. Those are, we showed this on the diagram because we were aware of the Habitat for Humanity proposal that was going in across the street, and figured it would come up in conversation as people were trying to understand what's going on in this part of town. So we just wanted to have it there for context. Those have not been built yet, as I understand. Is that right, Mark?
They're actually under construction.
Under construction currently.
Yep. And a question for the Planning Board. 46, I understand that it's 40B, and that was driven, this is a question, was driven by the state because we didn't meet our minimum affordability units, is that correct?
At 10%. It wasn't actually, it wasn't...
10%, right. So with other initiatives we haven't played, is that still, is that still being forced, even though we may meet our 10% with the Gordon and...
I think we're in safe harbor right now.
Oh, right, but we haven't reached our 10%. We might, depending on what happens with Gordon Conwell.
But it's never-ending, because every time you add, you have to do another 10%. So if you do 50 here, you've got it...
No, my point is, if we meet that 10%, what happens to 46? Does that still continue no matter what?
We'll never meet the 10%.
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, I think with Gordon Conwell, we'd meet it for a while.
Okay, yes.
So Marty, if we do, 46 still continues as affordable housing?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It just also counts, it just also counts for the 3A, for the 10% of 3A that we can use 40B for.
Right. Sort of counts towards both.
Okay.
It double counts.
Any questions now?
I think if there are clarification questions, yes. If there's like suggestions, let's wait.
No suggestions, for me.
Do you remember what the total number of units were?
I thought it was 45.
45.
45 on Bennett's land?
Yeah, not 46, I think it was 45.
Apologies, we'll make that correction.
60-something, I think.
What?
I think they wanted originally 60 some odd, and they had to go down to 40 because of the GPOD.
45, well, yeah.
Can I have a Slide 3 for a chance, please?
Okay.
Just a few basic rudimentary questions, if you give me a few to start even stated. The rescoping and reinitiation bullet 2?
Jeff, I'd like to, you know, just, let's get through the slides and then have our discussion end.
I thought you were done, I'm sorry, I thought you were done with the slide.
Oh, no, no, no.
There's quite a few more that are focused on the town center zoning.
Okay, sorry.
The next ones are very, have lots of pictures, so they're less heavy, shall we say, and Matthew will move through them. So I will pass it off and we'll return at the end.
I'll move as quickly as is appropriate. I'm going to spend a couple of slides just revisiting some of the highlights of the visioning process. I'm not going to revisit all of it, but I want to get to a little bit of a summary of where we're going with the form-based code or the downtown code as we are sort of drafting it. So, Mark, if you could go to Slide 14. One of the sort of, I think, important takeaways from the visioning process that we collaborated with, with the Advisory Committee, was to think about how we organize the downtown code based on what we call frontage types. So different streets, different roads have different characters worthy of either preservation or, in some cases, adaptation and improvement. So we sort of organized these along the big spine of Bay Road, which we're calling the Bay Road Scenic Corridor, the Historic Village Center, which is the commercial district of Railroad Ave, Willow Street mixed use, which is the sort of southeast portion of Willow Street that currently houses a bunch of mixed uses, and then Willow Street Residential, which is really the edge of the sort of residential neighborhood that extends to the northwest. And then allowance for a potential future greenway along the railroad right-of-way that would connect the downtown to the school site and Patton Park. Next slide. So we, as a way to think about what appropriate forms of buildings should be placed in different parts of the downtown, we began to look at this from the street edge inward. And in sort of three of these districts, I'd say, the modeling and the zoning that we're proposing is mostly geared towards what I would say are sort of preservation and enhancement of existing patterns. So the Historic Village Center, which is Railroad Ave, is a very tightly knit, nice sort of village-like commercial center with buildings that are close to the sidewalk. Bay Road Scenic Corridor has a very legible pattern of mixed use in some cases, some residential uses in buildings that were probably formerly residential. There's a fairly consistent kind of setback, a series of trees in the front, so you'll see that reflected in the image. And then Willow Street Residential also has a fairly consistent pattern, a little bit more tightly knit, obviously, because it's a smaller residential neighborhood, but there are identifiable patterns that give us clues about what the appropriate setback, scale of building, relationship to the sidewalk, and those things. Willow Street mixed use probably represents an area where we are recommending something a little bit different than what's there. There's not much of a pattern, per se. There's auto repair, there's landscape uses, there are commercial uses, residential uses. So what we're proposing is a slightly more pedestrian-friendly and consistent treatment that would enhance and activate Willow Street as a, from a pedestrian standpoint, be in appropriate scale with the downtown residential across the street, but allow for mixed use and some slightly larger development. And then lastly, the greenway is maybe a sort of a minor piece, there are not a lot of parcels that have back frontage on that, but it was something that we wanted to acknowledge in the planning to allow for kind of future development of these kinds of connections. Next slide. Okay, if you go to Slide 17, Mark, there are, if you look at the map in the upper-right-hand corner, the red area, which we're calling the Depot Square mixed use, is mostly commercial uses, and then the blue area, which we're now calling sort of Bay Road Civic, it's a town-owned parcel. These are two portions of the downtown code that are free from the requirements of 3A and MBTA Communities, and they're also a little bit different. So, Mark, if you go to the next slide. On Railroad Avenue, the patterns are actually quite legible, they're quite desirable. I think everyone appreciates the sort of village scale, the storefronts, the proximity to the street. What we've done is to... What we've done is to sort of decode those patterns into a series of dimensions and requirements that, that will sort of regulate the scale and the height and setbacks of these buildings. Again, this does not contribute to 3A. And if you go to the next slide. The Depot Square represents a very different kind of issue from a planning perspective, which is that it's a completely unique condition in your village center. It's not completely unique in many towns across Massachusetts, but it requires, we think, a slightly more planned and, if you will, à la carte sort of approach with regard to regulation. We worked with the working group, with Amel and others, to think about what were the important things for this, this site. And we think that, consistent with some of the other ideas that we have for the Downtown, we think it's important to maintain some kind of active frontage on both Walnut Road and along the rail line there, running north-south, which has a sort of long pedestrian edge and acts in a way as a kind of a face, even though there isn't direct vehicular access. Two other important things we felt were some extension of the sort of Railroad Avenue corridor. Again, interrupted by tracks, but important that there be some visual continuity and perhaps establishing a kind of gateway to that parcel at that point. And then the other piece was, again, a future potential connection to the Greenway, what we're calling the Greenway, which would be the sort of rail right of way. If you go to the next slide. We did a couple of visualizations of this, and through our conversations, we've sort of refined it and, and sort of begun to isolate the things that are important to us, we think. One is retaining that existing landscape corner on Walnut and Bay as a sort of welcoming, soft kind of pedestrian corner. The other was trying to get the density of those sort of liner buildings, if you will, sort of correct, and having them feel and look and be scaled in a way that's sort of similar to Railroad Ave to provide ground floor, active uses, potentially residential above or other kinds of mixed uses. You'll see that very important sort of corridor that runs as an extension to Railroad Ave into the site. There is currently a pedestrian path that doesn't follow the exact visual lines that we've put in there, but we think that that's important to maintain, that sort of important visual connection. And then we think that this site can still support large retail and other things that it currently does, but that those building types should probably be located in the rear and that, if possible, the site can begin to support a slightly more active sort of traditional flavor in the front. You'll also notice that the buildings, there's some sort of deliberate sort of separations between those buildings in the front. The idea is to create a sort of active porous zone with outdoor plazas or other ways that pedestrians can sort of navigate through. The next slide, I think, shows a nice example of this. We did a sort of urban design plan for the town of Weston, which has this exact same condition where they are navigating very nicely a transition from a traditional main street with some detached, some attached buildings, back to a sort of larger shopping center with a, with a grocery store. And what you see in between those buildings along the main street are a series of very nice outdoor plazas, active spaces, some are narrow to act as pathways, then you'll see in one case there, it aligns with a crosswalk. But this, we thought, was just a very good precedent and probably a good example to show you what we're thinking about when we're talking about sort of creating that sort of main street-like character on the perimeter and the connections through. The Bay Road Civic is really, it's really one parcel. I think there was a desire to extend the logic of the Bay Road District at least one parcel north until we got to the school site. The idea was that while it is owned by the town and it may continue to be used for civic uses, that I think that we felt it was important that, at a minimum, that the frontage of that parcel be sort of zoned for the same kinds of character that would be regulated on the rest of Bay Road. So you're seeing here a similar setback. Obviously, this building is expressed more as a kind of traditional civic building, but you can see how by setting the setbacks correctly, by, for instance, putting the parking at the rear, that that Bay Road sort of scenic corridor pattern might be sort of continued depending on whatever kinds of uses might, might occur there in the future. Again, this is outside of, of the 3A district. So I'll move now into the three portions that are in the 3A district. These are the, what we call Bay Road Mixed Use, Willow Street Mixed Use, which is currently the sort of industrial side of the street, and then the Downtown Residential. If you go to the next slide. I won't bore you with all of the numbers, you can read them in your own good time, but I wanted to point out a few sort of relevant things. One is that, is that in all cases where possible, we are, again, trying to align the setbacks, it's very, very important that the buildings present in a way that's compatible with the existing historic context. We're also using, and Zoe will explain, this slide doesn't seem to have it, but one metric that we do intend to use for these areas is a floor area ratio. The bottom annotation has it, yep. And there's a couple of reasons for this. One is that it sort of syncs up, it's easy to demonstrate to the state that there's compliance, but we also think it's a very useful metric in that it provides a certain control over the, the scale and quantity of the buildings. Oops.
Sorry, I think I forgot to share on Zoom, so I'm going to do that.
And it, it is a kind of natural control on how much building might be on a particular site. Currently, the zoning here allows for 25% of building coverage in a, in a two and a half story scenario here. That building coverage might be less, and that would be limited by the FAR. The, I.
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
Just a brief one. Maybe you could explain the FAR in just a little bit more detail to the fact that you, the, you multiply the FAR number by the area of the lot or parcel, that gives you the maximum square footage of developable building on that, on that parcel. That's the significance of it.
Yes, so, so it's a, and apologies for throwing around an acronym. It's, it's floor area ratio, which means you take the total area of the lot and you divide by the total gross floor area of the building.
Multiplied by the FAR, and it gives you the maximum.
Gives you the maximum.
The footage of building.
Right. So, and we're setting it, I believe, here at around .45 or somewhere in that neighborhood. We have a table of that later.
Yeah.
But again, the, we think it's a useful, it's not a traditional Form Based Code metric, but we think it's a very useful and flexible, but very controlling kind of metric to be using here. Next slide. And so you'll see a similar set of controls. I think what distinguishes the Willow Street Mixed Use District is, A, there isn't much of an existing pattern, I think. There was sort of consensus in our, in our outreach that this was perhaps a street that could use some improvement relative to creating a nice sort of walkable and active district. You'll see that we are sort of limiting the heights to two and a half feet along Willow Street to create a transition to the context that's on the other side before allowing greater height on the other side. I should note that in all of these locations, your current zoning allows three full stories. We're proposing a limitation of two and a half stories, just because it is more consistent with what we're seeing around town, generally on these sorts of frontages. Next slide. And then the Downtown Residential Building is on the, obviously on the other side of Willow Street and extends, for the most part, one lot deep, but there's some other areas we're extended into. And again, pretty much an extension of some of the existing patterns that we see there and heavily limited by a sort of floor area ratio maximum. Next slide. We are drafting the Downtown coding right now. I'm just going to give you a quick snapshot of how it's structured, it's fairly standard. There's a section at the beginning that explains what the purpose and how it's applied. Then there's, in any code in which design elements are more heavily prescribed, you need a section that graphically explains how certain standards are measured and interpreted. So there'll be a series of explanations of how we measure roof height, how we measure dormers, how we measure setback and things of that nature. And then we'll go into district by district, how these, what the various regulations are going to be relative to lots, buildings and uses. Okay.
Almost there, we just have a few more slides that will open it up. Okay, so since this effort is not only addressing the sort of formal standards for the town center, it is also contributing to meetings, the state requirements for 3A, we wanted to just walk you through the state compliance model. This is a tool that the state has built to be able to compare apples to apples across all of the different communities that need to come into compliance with this law. It is not a prediction of what will be developed, it is a way of estimating how the zoning rules that we've put into place would limit development, so that the state can be sure there aren't some, some provisions that are tucked into the zoning that would effectively make it impossible to develop housing units. So this is a tool that we'll kind of walk you through for Hamilton, for the, all of the parameters that Matthew just presented, what, what numbers we get and how we've kind of used these different districts and the sort of formal parameters that they each have to be able to get to a number that meets those state requirements. So there's a couple of pieces of this before I show you kind of all the numbers to just be aware of. For the sake of, again, being able to compare apples to apples, the state assumes a 1,000 square foot average of unit size. There are assumptions around developable land, like wetlands, not developable land. There are a series of other kind of formulas that are built in to help predict, you know, if you have a certain lot coverage limit or an open space requirement, how that translates into limitations on the buildable area and how many units could be built. So with that preamble, there are a lot of numbers here. I'll do my best to walk you through them and help you understand kind of the balance of what's in the town center versus what's in that outline district. So if you want to go to the next slide, this summary table provides you with the key metrics that are embedded in the zoning for each of the districts that we spoke about that contribute to the 3A requirements. That's the Willow Street Mixed Use, the Bay Road Mixed Use, the Downtown Residential, and then what we've been calling Asbury North, which is that two, set of two parcels along Asbury. So each of these, there are certain parameters that are, the model is very sensitive to. So those are the ones that we've listed as key model inputs. Those include floor area ratio, abbreviated as FAR here, which Amel helped to describe along with Matthew, minimum lot size, minimum parking spaces per unit, maximum building height in stories, and minimum percent open space. So all of those have a very direct impact on the number of units that can be built. And so those are the parameters that we've listed out here. The model outputs are what the, that sort of the backend spreadsheet essentially that calculates all of these, the impact of all of these parameters, sort of spits out to be, for the state to be able to understand, has, have these zoning metrics successfully achieved the required targets? So for Hamilton, again, those are, that's 731 units across the town as a whole, a minimum of 49 acres being zoned, and an average across all of those districts of 15 units per acre. Individual districts don't need to meet 15 units acre on their own, but as a whole, they need to hit that number. So what you'll see here is the downtown units, our highlight kind of in the bottom left of the slide there. This approach to the zoning would result in, according to the state compliance model, a modeled multifamily unit capacity of 393 units in the downtown area. That is not net new, that is inclusive of units that may already exist here today. It's saying that these rules would allow this number of units to exist under that rule set. The other piece I want to highlight is the Asbury North. So as discussed, for a variety of reasons, that site is unlikely to move forward with development in the near future. It already has multifamily on site. That is absorbing the balance of the unit numbers that are required to achieve state compliance for Hamilton, which is enabling us to keep those downtown town center sub-districts very tight, at slightly lower densities, and really matching the parameters that we had been hearing through our research and through our engagement with folks in the town. I imagine there'll be more questions on this. There's just one more slide that I want to cover, and then we'll circle back to scheduling once the kind of conversation has concluded. This outlines, so we're going to be putting forward and sharing with you on Thursday, two codes, two sort of zoning amendments. One that addresses all of those town center sub-districts, and one that addressed the outlying overlay district for the Asbury North site that we've been talking about. So what you're seeing here are the metrics that we are suggesting for that site. It includes addressing alignment with the, the sort of underlying R1B zoning, that's your base zoning for this district. And also addresses some of the necessary alignment with the groundwater protection overlay district. So you see that 8,000 square foot minimum lot size metric coming up at the top there. And then the 175 minimum lot frontage also aligns with the R1B. And there's a, sort of embedded in here, a couple of other metrics like FAR and minimum setbacks, minimum open space percentage, that are all designed to try and align as much as possible with your existing zoning and also meet the requirements necessary to, for this to play the role that we talked about in the overall approach to 3A requirements. I will, is there anything else you wanted to highlight about this one?
I promised to get back to the GOPD, GPOD. We, there's only two parcels here, they're both greater than 80,000 square feet. We set the minimum of 80,000 square feet to sort of avoid that issue.
Yeah.
If through your warrant, that zoning has changed to be 80,000 square feet per unit and not per building lot, we'll have to cross that bridge a little bit later about how we exempt it. We will also have to exempt buildings in this district from the special permit requirement. So projects here would go through site plan review, which includes all the review, the review, the engineering and all those sorts of standards. But the, to be eligible for 3A, you, you can't require a special permit, it has to be allowed sort of as of right, but with a site plan review.
Zoe, Zoe, you mentioned at, at the outset that on Thursday, we're going to see two of these charts, one for the downtown area, is that right?
So not just the chart, but the entire code. We'll be sending the full draft zoning for both. This, the 3A multifamily overlay district, which would apply to the Asbury North site, as well as the downtown zoning for your town center sub-districts, which have much more extensive.
If I may, this, this one is an R1B. On it, and you're, you're just adding these components to?
It would be an overlay.
An overlay, but it's.
So in, so in.
Mandatory overlay on the R1B.
It doesn't, it's not a mandatory overlay, it's an optional, so any, the property owners for those two parcels in, that are subject to, would be subject to this overlay district and that currently are in R1B. They would each have a choice, if they're pursuing development, to pursue development under the R1B or to pursue development under the. under the R1B, or to pursue development under the overlay. They will retain all of the same property rights that they have under R1B, those will be unaltered, they'll just have a second pathway to development.
Will that be true in the downtown area, then?
For the downtown, we're suggesting replacing your current zoning. And that is because your current zoning does not have the level of formal controls that would be able to achieve the results that we've heard from people, as we were listening to the Vision Age project. People were adamant about things like half stories, roof forms, scale, building footprint, all of those things are not adequately regulated in your current underlying zoning. And so, we think that this proposed zoning, regardless of whether you're supportive of 3A, would actually provide the town with increased control.
Yeah.
And actually, in many cases, less physical built form than what your current zoning So I think with that, we're now into discussion. If there's feedback, if there's questions, we can jump around to the pieces of the presentation that are most relevant, and take that feedback into consideration as we're moving into the next sort of round of revisions on the draft code.
So one thing, Amel, I think you just touched on this, but maybe it went over my head. That Asbury is, is number, was it 60, 46, I think it was, was, is targeted for 40B. How can it be 40B and 3A, which is market rate at the same time?
So there's, it's a, it's a little bit more subtle than that. So 40B, you know, a town is subject to 40B based on the level of affordability that you have currently. If a 40B is proposed, part of the way that they can move forward is, is based on affordability, that they're, they're contributing affordable housing to the region. If you had enough affordable units in place already, you would not be subject to that pathway of state-level override of your, your existing zoning. But for those 40Bs that have moved forward, they move forward, they have, they're allowed to continue building, it doesn't, it's not altered by subsequent rezoning efforts. But, the interaction between the 3A and the 40B is important to understand, because the 3A, the MBTA community's law was really around enabling housing production of any kind. It can be affordable housing production, but it needs, the, the primary goal was enabling housing production, so enabling people to build the kind of multifamily housing that you fucking want. That means that it has to be possible, it has to be economically feasible, to build those units, in order for it to mean anything.
You specifically market rate units.
It doesn't carry any affordability requirement. Affordable units can contribute, can come in under the MBTA community's 3A overlay. So it doesn't, it doesn't preclude that.
But as a rule, it works against 40B, right? So, let's just say 10% of, of that particular site is, has to be affordable. That percentage has to go way up, because you're working at the same time against that number, right? As you're growing more market rate units, your affordability is going to have to go up. So, I don't know, it'd be 30, 40%, I have no idea what it would be, but it'd be significant growth.
Yeah, just a, a quick clarification, we're, the MBTA communities won't allow you to require more than 10%, unless you prove it's economically feasible through a study, et cetera, et cetera. What we're proposing is to set that at 10%, the max that they allow. It's going to require some exemptions from your current, you know, section 8.3, your inclusionary zoning, which, if I read it correctly, indicates one unit for the first 10, and then one for every seven thereafter. So it's greater than 10%. But, the intention of this new zoning, with that, basically, you're setting it at 10%.
But it's already, and I understand this is, I'm maybe wrong, but it's already been designated 40B. Would MBT Communities Act?
It doesn't matter what it is now. 3A only requires that you have the underlying zoning, whatever's on top of it now, doesn't, doesn't matter. But the underlying zoning of the land has to accommodate 15 units per acre. So, you could, you could take a brand-new development somewhere, and rezone it for 3A, add 15 units per acre, and it'll never come into being, because the use that's there is new and economically viable, but it just has to have an underlying zoning of that density, which can be economically infeasible, not related in any way to the zoning, to the use that's already there. It's just, it's like a potential bylaw. I think that's correct, right?
I think that's exactly right.
Yeah, and I, and I think that the, the 25%, if, if the project that's there is a 40B, which I think it is, and it's providing 25%, those 25% are usually deed restricted, so they're kind of.
The project, the, the 45-unit project, you have it as 46. I mean, we could double-check that with the comprehensive permit, but though, that's 40B housing at 60% affordable or less.
20% AMI.
Yeah, or less. And, and whether that's deed restricted in perpetuity, our inclusionary housing bylaw now requires that, but it was, it's going to be that way if it's approved at town meeting. It's, it's not that way now. But, of course, the Habitat for Humanity project across the street, that's deed restricted in perpetuity. And, I think that, and I, I'm just making an observation here, with, with respect to this Asbury.
Do you think, I had a question, do you think the state will approve, I mean, this project's about 50/50 in terms of being within the, the minimum distance of the MBTA and being off-site. Is there 50/50 going to fly, has it in other communities?
So your requirements with the state only require 20% to be located within your station area.
Only 20.
20% of that 731 units.
Okay.
To be within your station area. So it doesn't run afoul of those requirements. So it should, you know, obviously, the, the last decision sits with the state, and we're going to, you know, pursue a more formal review with them to get that answer, but that, what you just raised is not an issue.
Okay.
On your side?
Right, I was just thinking that with respect to this overlay district for North Asbury, that overlay district might actually, if our amendment goes through, have to trump that amendment to the GPOD. Not that I would advocate that, I'm just making an observation, that if it were to be viable, it might have to do that. I'm not advocating that, I'm just suggesting that.
And it was your, Bill, was your assumption, if I read you wrong, forgive me, was it something that it would not be economically feasible for a builder to build there if it's 40B?
Well, I mean, if you take a look at the, it's very nicely thought out, that the half of that Asbury area is Canterbury. Canterbury's a brand-new condominium development with million-dollar condominiums. Now, the, it's a sort of notion that some, even if the underlying zoning gets changed to be 15 units per acre, those condo owners are, are not going to sell out to some developer who would build a, you know, 50 or 100-unit apartment building there. The economics wouldn't make sense to buy out all those owners. So it's, it's.
But the plot behind it's much larger and empty right now.
No, they have a comprehensive permit. They're ready, they can go at any time.
Right, that's what I'm saying, right? So that's, that's a viable development option right there.
No.
And Canterbury.
Yes, and that's, that's.
That's where the 45 units are going.
I don't, that's, I don't think, and I don't think Harborlite, which has, you know, put itself into the queue to get Lytech, to get, I don't think they would sell out that option to some private developer who would come along and put 15 units per acre on that section of land. They, they want to do what they want to do, and they, they make a lot of money doing that, and they're in the, they're in the building queue for a 40B project.
Is it my recollection that that's four units there, four acres rather?
Section one is. We're talking about section 46, right?
Yeah, but that's only four acres, I believe. Peter Britton's land.
46 is.
I think it's 3.95 or something like that.
3.4, approximately four acres.
Four acres, yeah. So they, you know, they're already building almost that, that many units in their 40B project, and their, 40Bs are very profitable, they're, they're not going to deviate from that.
My other question was on that, slide three, just out of curiosity. If you go back to slide three, please. That second bullet indicated updated scope and schedule and budget. Who defined that updated scope, and is it available for everybody to see?
So we actually ended up, that was really to confirm that we could complete the project within the resources that remained, given that the first portion of the project included a lot of public engagement that went beyond what we originally scoped for. And we were able to confirm that, as long as we kept our role focused on the zoning, we were able to finish out the contract with the originally agreed-upon budget. So there was no formal amendment to the scope, we just needed time to verify that we were able to complete it with the resources we had.
Okay. And, and you may not know the answer to this, but the task force member, who, who created that, or how was it created, and who determined who was on it?
Right here.
Yeah.
I believe it was the select board.
Select board determined who was on it, and that it had to be created?
I believe so, yes.
I will just say, for our purposes, we needed a small group that we could move quickly with, that had some level of contact with both the planning board and select board. This was not, you know, neither the advisory committee nor the task force were structured to be formal endorsing bodies of the work that we provided. They were structured to provide feedback to us, so that we had a sounding board as we were moving forward. And because we had really a month and a half to move through the full zoning, it wasn't feasible to take it on with a larger body of people. So that's why we're now bringing it to those larger formal bodies for public discussion in a more fully formulated structure.
I've got a couple of questions. I know Bruce Towers got a bill he's pushing, allowing for alternative compliance to the, to the zoning requirements that have been put forth, and it's pretty clear that you've reverse engineered your design standards to result in a number of units that's compliant, I guess. Question would be, for whatever reason, there is, this bill gets passed, and there is flexibility in the compliance requirements, and the state decides they'd rather build 200,000 homes than take towns to court. Would you change any of the metrics that were being proposed? I imagine you backed into those numbers, get the units. So, I wondered if you took a different perspective, saying, looking at the town, if you had that aside, what would be the best for Hamilton to provide high-density housing downtown, and what metrics would you change or use, and how many units would that result in, if you took a look at just what the downtown zoning would support?
Yeah, I would say that, again, if you were completely free to do what you wanted to do, we probably wouldn't be putting an overlay zone on Asbury, right? It's, it's, you know, full disclosure, we're playing a little bit of a numbers compliance game there. I think the downtown zoning is really quite good. I think the, the densities and the forms that we're proposing are completely, we haven't sort of, like, gone off the rails. The densities are very consistent with what's there. I suppose we would have spent maybe less time fussing with the shape of the downtown residential district, that's the yellow portion. I think it has, we've had to, in order to meet the right acreage, we've had to sort of push and pull and figure out the shape that makes the most sense, that also meets the requirements. But in terms of the fundamental sort of plot-by-plot density, honestly, my professional recommendation would be to do what we're doing.
And the second part of that was, it probably will come about on Thursday, but I guess the form-based code and how it's written, can it also, or should it, and should we require it to, not only recommend how form is designed, but also in sustainability features, such as materials of construction, means of method, performance, you know, potentially even beyond energy code, but looking forward to like what our goals of the town and the state are, you know, coming, come 2030, 2050, and things of that nature, water use and that stuff. I think form-based code allows for those options, and we should take full advantage of that opportunity to build a sustainable downtown, if it does get, you know, redeveloped.
I don't know offhand if Hamilton is a stretch code community.
We are.
Okay, so that's, and I don't know if you're an expanded stretch code or enhanced stretch code community, but.
About that one.
Yeah. They just raised the bar. From an energy standpoint, it's extremely high right now. So I honestly, from an energy standpoint, I'm not sure zoning is the right tool to advance that. I think the best way is to opt in to the specialized enhanced stretch code.
It's my recollection, and I don't have the emergency regulations in front of me, but there were limitations on the, a community's ability to require really stringent environmentally responsible development, ironically. I, I want to make a couple of points. Number one is the emergency regulations are due to expire probably within a week or so. I looked today to see whether the executive office had scheduled a public hearing, and one is required under the Administrative Procedures Act. So I didn't see that that happened. I saw no evidence that the executive office had responded in any way, shape, or form to the comments that they received, that it received. So, it's, it'll be curious for me if they accept any of the recommendations from the communities that chose to respond to them, to their, to the employees' requests for comments, and, and how also the unfunded mandate will play into this. So even though, at one point, I thought, I think that everyone thought that the Milton case would provide certainty, 3A is still uncertain. It's still uncertain. So how to address that, we could be here, let's see.
Weeks.
All night. So I, I just note, and I was curious, so I went to the Wenham's website, and Wenham is going forward with just a straight 3A overlay. 13 pages, actually 12 and a quarter. And, they have a sunset provision, which I thought was smart. And it basically says, if anything happens to 3A, well, all bets are off, we're done. So, they're giving themselves an out. And, and I.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I'm not going to read the whole thing, but it essentially says that for any reason, these regulations get changed, we're not going to be bound by what we have in here.
Does that mean you're voting zoning?
They put that sunset clause in?
Yeah.
That was very clever of them.
Purpose, in January 2025, the Supreme Judicial Court, an Attorney General versus Town of Milton, declared the guidelines for compliance for 3A, I'm going to paraphrase, to be ineffective and unenforceable, because they were not promulgated pursuant to the Administrative Procedures Act. On January 14th, the EO HLC filed emergency regulations that did not substantially change the requirements imposed by the guidelines, with the intention to adopt permanent regulations in accordance with General Law's Chapter 38. Since January 14th, additional litigation has been filed challenging the emergency regulations, and alleging that the Executive Office of Housing in Livable Communities has failed to comply with General Law's Chapter 38 and the SJC's decision and the Town of Milton's decision. So it goes on. If for any reason, General Law's Chapter 48, Section 3A, the emergency regulations or any permanent regulations adopted in their place shall be deemed ineffective, unenforceable, or invalid in whole or in part by a final judgment of the courts of the Commonwealth, or repealed, rescinded, changed, or amended in such manner as to alter the metrics and the regulations concerning unit capacity requirements as applied to the Town of Wenham, i.e. requiring other than 360 units for Wenham to be deemed in compliance with this zoning bylaw amendment, and I won't read the subsections, shall be void and of no legal effect and immediately rescinded without further action required from the town. This is a draft, okay? I, I don't want to, this is a draft, it hasn't been approved.
They had a very simple approach to this whole thing.
They did have a simple.
That's the problem.
So, another question is, is if the town wants to appeal under the unfunded mandate provision, I presume we would have to come up with some set of numbers. provision, I presume we would have to come up with some set of numbers for, you know, how we put a sewer system in downtown to accommodate 390 units and come up with some number, 20 million, 10...
Auditor will do that. Once you file for an exemption, the state auditor will come in and do the feasibility and the financial analysis for everything, schools, infrastructure, public safety.
We haven't seen the state auditor do that yet, so...
Well, that's what she claims, but you have to apply for it.
You have to apply for it.
You have to apply for it. But what is actually eligible to be included in that is, to me, unclear at this point since we haven't seen it. So, we, you know, you might assume that she would consider all these things. It may not be that.
Well, I read that quote, that that is what she does, and she hadn't, she hadn't received anything when it went to print, so, and that was in The Globe. That's what she said.
So, this is still in court, all in limbo?
That's unfortunately the case.
Right.
Did you have a comment?
I'll weigh in briefly, just to say that this is a very condensed timeline. And yes, there are still some open questions that have been raised, as Marnie described. I expect the state will prioritize resolving those before the deadline they have set. And if the town does not continue to prepare for that, you are putting yourself in a very difficult position, and you will not be able to put forward a strong proposal that keeps your best interests at the center. So, I would advise preparing for what the emergency regulations have described. You can continue to pursue alternate, you know, insurance pathways, et cetera, wherever you feel is appropriate, but I would not abandon preparation for this on account of the continued uncertainty because there is, you have strict noticing requirements for your town meeting, and there is a very firm deadline that has been put in place currently for, you know, July 14th. You have very limited time between now and then to prepare.
I agree with those statements that Zoe just made, and I also agree, or observe, that a lot of headway has been made on the code. And it's a very, very compressed timeline, and to my mind, trying to get the form-based code in a form and a condition and a review process in the amount of time we have and then fully replace the code we have feels unrealistic.
I'm not sure they're mutually exclusive. I think that we could apply for a form-based zoning code on top of this as long as it did not violate the underlying state requirement of 15 units per acre, so I...
I agree with that, but it's not the trajectory we're on. We're, right now, I think, on the trajectory where these things are tied together.
Well, then, maybe we should untie them.
Again, I agree that we need to be prepared for 3A, and we should be prepared for 3A alternatives, but I think that the form-based code, in the meantime, is in jeopardy because it's trying to run along with this compressed timeline, and there's not enough time to do it correctly. That's...
I would agree with that, but I don't see why we can't go ahead with this and file it and then continue on with our form-based code.
I'll also just note...
Because what?
This would be...
The scope has, the scope had changed so much through the course of this that we've wasted all the money.
No, no, I think, I mean...
We only have enough money to finish on the compressed...
I'd like to hear from Zoe.
The state does, allows for future amendments, so I would suggest that in the time we have, we polish this up and work as hard as we can to get it to reflect the best that we can put forward in the time we have. And if there are continued refinements that the town deems necessary, that that is something that can occur within the framework of what we've put in place and improve upon it in years to come, hopefully with a relatively light amount of additional effort, because we also have substantial documentation of all of the process to date. And if there are pieces that you want to return to, you want to enhance, bring forward, I think there's ample opportunity to do that through a future amendment. I recognize that's still not ideal, but I'm not sure that we have an option, given that there's only so much time to get to the July 14th deadline.
I guess what I'm more interested in talking about is what you just said, looking at what would the trajectory of that be? You know, what would, how, what would we need to do to make it more robust? What would the timing of that be? What would the mechanics of that be? Rather than going down the rabbit hole of trying to speculate what the state's going to do or what the municipalities are going to do in relative to the state. So, I'd rather talk about that than what if.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, but I have a question. So, if there's, this timeline for the form-based code is really, really tight. Drafting just a 3A zoning, that doesn't seem to me to be as difficult because you can crib off another town's bylaw. But, and this might be naive, but you have this townwide compliance summary table, and that has metrics in it that reflect the protective aspects of the form-based code. Now, is it conceivable to use this table and then take a little more time to really promulgate a really robust form-based code based on these metrics? Separating the two in terms of a vote? So, that in the off chance, or the likely chance, depending on your point of view, that the 3A provisions or whatever went down at a vote at town meeting, the form-based code could still go forward using these similar metrics? Does that, is that a worthwhile question to even ask?
It's a good question to ask. I will say, it's probably more complicated than executing the form-based code. It's well underway. We've only shown you a summary here. Later this week, you'll see at least a first draft. We have the other district pretty much completely written. So, I would recommend, rather than deciding it's not enough time, to at least respond to the draft that we send you. And, you know, drafts have a way of bringing up questions we haven't even thought about. So, the sooner that we can iterate on these drafts, you know, you will probably all have a lot of, well, wait, what about what if? What if, you know, and how does this trigger other things? But I feel like we've been at this for a while. I think there's a pretty high level of comfort about the basic districts that we have and the scale and the parameters. And I think really what we're doing is sort of executing the actual document. And it doesn't need to be overly complex. We're trying to keep it as simple as possible. Your current zoning is extremely simple, I will say. In fact, to the point where we're having to sort of add some definitions and things to make the form-based piece possible, but that would be my recommendation. But I, again, I think it's perfectly a good question to ask, but my recommendation would be to move forward in the interest of sort of building on what we've done.
Since we're expecting the full code in two days, right? So, then we can have a larger conversation about, once we have that. If the board wants to focus on 3A, we don't lose this work, but you know, that would be, that would be focused on just the areas in the black, the blacked-out outline, so that, you know, potentially we could pursue something else in the future. I think that's something we could kind of have that discussion, but they've already done a lot of work on this, so let's look at the code when it comes.
Right. Yeah, I'd also just add briefly, and I think this is something we've discussed at length in different settings, that the, you know, the coding that we've developed for the downtown, for your town center, would provide the maximum possible control over the 3A outcomes by virtue of replacing your base zoning and being the only zoning governing this district. It would provide you with a level of control that a more simple 3A overlay would not. And so, for that reason, we think this is your best approach moving forward, and so therefore, I would focus on this as a form-based code that may continue to improve and evolve over time as the town makes use of it, should it pass. And that, should it not pass, you have a starting point to continue to pursue a form-based approach in your downtown. And you can choose to discard pieces of this that were rooted in some of the 3A numbers that we needed to get to. I do not think that that would require substantial additional effort. It would be a matter of swapping out a couple of metrics here and there, and you'd have a very robust set of form-based, vision-informed zoning rules that you could then adapt to your intended purpose.
I think we also have to think about the fact that if this is to meet 3A, it will have to be approved by town meeting. And the question is, will it be easier to get approval with or without form-based code? It's sort of the simpler, more direct approach, maybe more palatable to voters than trying to spring two new things on them rather than just one. I don't know. It's just a thought.
I don't want to put words in Matthew and Zoe's mouth, but I think they said it's not as easy as you might think to extricate the two at this very moment. Is that, is that pretty much what you've conveyed?
Yeah, I mean, you could discard all of the additional form-based elements and focus only on the aspects that contribute to 3A, but I think that would be a loss, not a gain.
I agree with Bill. I think you have the optics of 3A, and it's probably going to be a really tough pill for the town to swallow. And if form-based code is attached to it, then that's going to go down with it. And, you know, hopefully, like you said, it's easy to extricate afterwards, that one piece. So, it looks like we have three options. We can either just accept the utile plan. We can accept it with contingencies like Wenham did perhaps? I don't know if that's an option or not.
Oh, I think you can put a sunset, a clause in there.
Or, you know, what's the risk of postponement? I'm not suggesting, I'm just asking, what's the risk? I mean, if we have Bruce Towers trying to push through initiative, we have the unfunded mandate, what's the risk there?
Well, I think we can...
As a planning board member, I wouldn't, I wouldn't vote to support doing nothing.
Right. Oh, no. I don't either, but...
I wouldn't support waiting and seeing what happens. I wouldn't do that as a planning board member, just to tell you where my position is.
Right, right. Well, look, it's 8:40. I don't know if anybody here wants to make some brief comments, but I think, under the circumstances, Thursday is the day, we should, you know, we'll see what you have for us, and we can really, it'll help us focus our questions. I don't know if the intention was to have a joint meeting with the Select Board? Was that...
We had, I think, moving forward, as we think about scheduling future meetings, it's helpful to have the Select Board continue to be aware of how it's evolving, just because of the tight timeline, but it is still solidly within the Planning Board's jurisdiction, and because we needed to move fast, we decided to prioritize meeting with you today without adding that level of coordination to include the Select Board. So, it's an optional, you know, coordination choice that we would recommend where it's possible moving forward, but it's not required in order for us to keep moving.
Well, I would be in favor of meeting with or without the Select Board, you know, as soon as possible.
Oh, yeah.
For me, after we get your information.
Yep.
I just want to make a comment. Having followed what you've been doing all along, I think you're on the right track in terms of dealing with what you have to deal with. And for me, the whole thing is going to be, can you really push it across the mark, given the timeframe that you have now? That's going to be a really tough thing, to get everything sort of lined up. And you can go back in the future and sort of redo it, as you said. It's relatively easy, I'll say, with that type of code, but that's going to be the real challenge from my standpoint. But they have been considered as two things being one, the 3A plus the form-based code. So, trying to do anything that would sort of be like a bait and switch, or, you know, calling it a different name, or whatever, that doesn't make any sense to me. So, I think proceeding as quickly as you can. And our job, I think, as a planning board, is to evaluate what you do in terms of the quality of the code. So, I would be, you know, absolutely in favor of you continuing, and maybe having closer communications back and forth to get the answers you need to go forward. But, and for me, the more meetings, the better. But...
Let's talk briefly about scheduling. Do we want to hold a special meeting? So, we'll be getting this code Thursday. Do you want to hold a special meeting next week?
On April 8th?
No. I'm sorry?
On April 8th?
April 8th has been thrown out as an option, yes.
I would advocate for that.
Yeah, I would go for that, too.
I'd advocate for more meetings.
Just for the record, I'm going to be away for a week, beginning April 15th, so I'm gone on the middle of the month, but 15th to about the 23rd.
And just so you know, sporting seasons have started, so practices and everything else is happening in the world. Those coaches on the planning board. And adding meetings, I think, is like, we're pushing, I don't know.
Well, we got to make, we got to make a decision in a couple of weeks.
To be honest.
What's that?
Adding meetings doesn't necessarily help their development speed either. We're going to get something on Thursday, and then you're going to expect a Friday...
No, but it's, the thing is, just...
Sunday, Monday to have a meeting on...
Just think about it. They're asking for three feedback loops, you know, three meetings to go over the code. So, you got to have the meeting, discuss any changes that you want to make. They have to go back, make the changes, come back again, one more time.
But those two-week intervals, I think, allow for that pretty nicely, that feedback, because I don't know.
Yeah, so I think...
Works if you get a comment on Friday, and you probably don't have it updated by Tuesday, depending on what it is.
So, I mean, we can poll members whether or not they're willing to have a meeting on April 8th. I mean, that's a question. I know you have kids, so that's harder for you, but us old folks...
Just to clarify, for the April 8th meeting, if we, if the board does choose to move forward with that, the purpose of that meeting would be, we will have shared with you the draft code this Thursday. We will be hearing comments from you on Tuesday, so that we can then take those comments back, make revisions, come back to you with a revision. So, in terms of our work, we will be moving at the pace that we were intending to move at, regardless of whether we're meeting on the 8th. We will be getting you a full draft code on Thursday. The question is whether you feel you can, you know, convene on that date and have reviewed the code at a level that would be, enable you to have a productive conversation with us on Tuesday, the 8th.
So, poll, who is amenable to meeting on April 8th?
I can, but I don't know if I'm going to have time to read all the stuff that's coming on Thursday.
So, is it a quorum?
Do we have a quorum?
How large is this document?
We have a quorum.
Minimum is 12 pages, yeah.
How much time?
How many?
Oh, it's only 15?
15 pages?
5, 0.
5, 0, 50.
Oh, 50, that's all right. I'll do as far as I can.
But a lot of it's diagrammatic.
There are pictures.
The 3A, the Asbury piece, the overlay, is fairly brief. It's, you know, four pages. But the form-based piece is, obviously, it's just much more involved.
But it's still, I mean, to the extent we don't understand it, that's important, because if we have questions and there's uncertainty, then of course, the public, were they to get it, wouldn't understand it either.
Yeah, you will, you will have a lot of questions, and that's a good thing.
Yeah.
But I'm just generally a fan of initiating the iteration sooner rather than later.
Right.
Because it's the only way to progress the code, is to get it out there and to keep iterating and fine-tuning.
Right, and I agree with you, because I know that, I think I speak for the planning board, we have looked at the Hamilton Crossing building form framework, and we did have questions and concerns about that. So, there'll be a discussion, I think, a good discussion on that. And of course, we will have nothing else on our agenda, I hope, right? Because this is an extra meeting. And so, what will be a meeting devoted entirely to this topic?
And I don't know if we can get this room, but we'll find somewhere to have it, perhaps at Council on Aging, and we'll try to ensure that it's televised.
Right. Okay. Does anyone have any public comment? And again, I, if everyone can be brief, because we're, we started at... And again, I, if, if everyone can be brief, because we're, we started at 6:00.
While, while we wait for that presentation on Thursday, is it worth us, in email, looking at, exploring options for contingency wording? Like Wenham did?
Oh, oh, sure. Yeah, 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 yeah. No, I mean, I think that's just smart, because, I mean, I agree...
Here's how that works. Is it any change at all, then we revisit?
Well, I'd have to, I have to really parse their language, but I agree with Jonathan...
We should have town council about it. Make sure it's...
Yeah, yeah. No, but do you see sunset provisions like that in a lot of things? So that's, it's not uncommon. But I, I think we should proceed, but we should also recognize, there is the off-chance. I don't think the law is going to be, you know, the regulations won't go forward, but they could be modified to some extent.
We want the opportunity to address those modifications.
Yeah, so we can, essentially, it's a reservation of rights, if you will.
Hi, Debs Safford. I just have a few questions. There was a comment about the EOHLC, that we can do modifications if we pass something and then want to make changes. But I think it's my understanding that the government agency has to approve any changes that are done after a 3A zone is approved. And they might, like in Lexington, they can change the zone, but they're not going to reduce the number of units. So once it's approved as a zoning for a certain number of units, then that doesn't get modified, is my understanding. But the, where you might place it can be modified, but they want to make sure that you have the same number of units. So I'm not sure that passing it, knowing that you can revise it, and maybe pull some back, is actually, I'm not sure that's valid. I would want to research that.
Can I just answer to that? Because I think I was the one who said it. What I intended to say was that, in the event it is not approved, you can make changes easily. If 3A did go down on a vote, then you could change the code, the form-based code, relatively easily in the future.
Right. I think, I think it wasn't your comment, I think it was a comment that someone else made, that one of you guys made, I think. And I'm just not sure that that's...
Okay.
No, because we missed the December deadline, which was the first deadline. We were happy as a town to miss that and sort of wait and see. And I think there's still a lot of litigation that's out there. So I think it's interesting that four people, it seems like, on the task force kind of set this deadline, that we had to make it and had to meet it. And I'm just not sure, like, what shifted, where we were okay. There's still a lot of litigation going out there. And so it would be my recommendation, I was on the advisory committee, so I have been invested in understanding this situation. And one of the things that I was talking about during the advisory committee is, especially with that yellow block, is how do we actually know how many of those units should be zoned for multifamily, if we didn't have the 3A number metric, you know, gun to our head, right? And, and I think, Matthew, that you had said that, you know, you're comfortable that that's the right number. And I, I think you're going to get pushback from the community as to what is that number, and how did we derive it? And what's the economic consequence of that many units on school, and public service, and traffic, and all that stuff? Like, all that has to be kind of vetted out. So it would be my recommendation to think about, before you go to the town, is what is that part that Zoe had said, that you can pull the 3A zoning part out and have the form-based code be kind of on its own, within, maybe it's just the frontage of Willow Street, and then the other parts? Because people have worked a lot to try and make it a more walkable, friendly, interfaced, you know, town to draw people in. And I think if, if we only present one option, which has it all tied to meeting that, instead of sort of multiple options that you can build and people can sort of vote yes or no, or, you know, to those things, I would just recommend not tossing that out, because we're up against a deadline that, you know, is that, is that really a hard deadline? I know that that's what our money speaks to. There was a delay, and now we're meeting the end. But again, it's based on what the government has dictated. And when there's issues out there, we should be pursuing an unfunded mandate clause. We should be pursuing, at best, a reduction. You know, the town manager did send a letter looking for a reduction in number of units. We've got a line with Wenham, we all know this, right? And we've got the full capacity of units, and we've got half the space. So I just think there's a lot of issues that are still out there that we shouldn't just ignore, because we have this deadline that the task force has decided to set, and the select board has set this meeting in June, so that we can cram this down. And I think if it's not done thoughtfully, we're going to just have wasted a lot of money on the feasibility study. I think that would be really sad.
Kathleen Brill, I'm a resident here in Hamilton. I just want to say, I support our town complying with 3A. I understand and have followed the lawsuits and the various other challenges, but I think, I think we do need to comply, and I hope that we can pull it together to put something before the town, to ask them to vote for a plan that will bring us into compliance. I support housing production across the state, and I support our town being open to that here. And I just wanted to, I guess, two things. One, on the unfunded mandate, I think my understanding of that is, if anything, it would be funds to hire someone like them, to help you come up with a plan to do the compliance. It's not funds to put in a sewer system, or any of the other infrastructure things that people have been talking about. So I don't think we should hang our hat on that. And then the other piece is, I just really wanted to understand where the public will have additional opportunity to comment and weigh in on this, and whether the draft of the zoning code that they're going to share with you all later this week will be something that could be posted on the website for other people, especially given that there is a compressed timeline to put this all together.
Yes, I will definitely post on the website as soon as we get, shortly after we get...
Once there's a final version, assuming everything is aligned, then there is an official public notice and a public hearing. So that, all our meetings are open, and, and the drafts will be available. But there will be a formal public hearing, similar to the one we had on the small wireless facility, with the public notice, so that everyone in the community has noticed. It'll be in the paper and that kind of thing.
I think there's some misunderstandings of the unfunded mandate. Does somebody here want to explain what that means? I think it's more along the lines of, there's certain financial burdens on the town that this places, then the state must offer contributions to help with that, right?
Right. But, but, you know, to me, it's still unclear as to what constitutes an unfunded mandate. So we haven't, we don't have clarity on that, and I haven't seen anything lately as to any, any, anything issued by Diane DeSaglia's office. So it's, that's a to-be-determined.
Hi, I'm Erin Crowley. I live in Hamilton. Listen, we have a housing crisis in Massachusetts, we have it in Hamilton. I have relatives right now, a cousin who desperately wants to live in our community and can't find anything in her price range. And we have to move forward. I don't think the delay, delay, delay tactic has worked well for our community. I think that's why we are having a rushed timeline right now, to figure out what to do. So my request of this body is to move forward. I think this is a pretty good plan. I'm not a planner myself, so I defer to your expertise, but I think it actually complies with 3A, and actually makes our downtown more beautiful. Like, I think our downtown could actually, density would make it look better. So I think it's solving both problems. So I would ask this body to maybe stop with the focus on what is, you know, the legislation's not going to pass. Like, I love Senator Tar, but all these communities have complied, they're not going to pass legislation just because a handful, including Hamilton, don't want to. Those legislators are not. And say, it did pass, the governor will veto, it's not going to have a 2/3 majority. So I think spend less time talking about these theories about how it could all go down. It's not going down. 3A is here to stay. And my big request would be to get this body not just to be talking about it, but pushing it. Like, it's, it's very upsetting, as a resident of this community, to hear members talking about how it is going to go down at town meeting. I think it's your responsibility as a planning board to ask the hard questions, to put a plan together that you support, but also that you should also get behind and advocate, not do a fait accompli, that this is going to go down in town meeting, because we need more housing in this community. We, as a town, need to comply with state law. Like, that, we have to comply with state law. You all know that in the positions that you sit in. So my request is that you focus on moving forward with this plan, give thoughtful feedback to how you might change aspects of it, to, you know, better fit with our community, but to focus less on how are we going to delay and distract, or not comply with state law, and put something forward and get behind it, and help our community pass it, so that our town is in compliance with this law. And it's also contributing to meeting the very, very real crisis we have with housing here in Hamilton.
Sandy Fisher, Greenbrook Road. I wasn't planning to speak, but I must speak now. I do not think it's something to rush into, because we will live with this forever. We are building more housing, that is happening. There is affordable housing happening, we just heard about it today, down on Asbury Street, like something 46 units. So we are having some affordable housing built, and I think that's really great. 3A does not require affordable housing, so in terms of people who are wanting affordable housing, they cannot count on 3A for that. And as I looked at the, the map of the overlay district, you know, it's pretty, you know, there's a lot of housing already there. And so I, I have a question of what that actually means. If I have a house that's within the 3A zone, and it's a single-family house, can I just knock it down and put up a house with three or four units in it? Whatever I can cram on that lot? I'm just curious about that. Is that true? Because I'm seeing a lot of area included in the 3A zone that is already built, so this is not new area. What I see down on Asbury Street is new area with their breaking ground. So I just have a lot of questions, and so rushing into something, for me, is, is not wise. Also, I think it's important to have input from the community, as opposed to pushing through something and trying to make the public go along with it. I think the best way is to ask the public and get input. And the other thing is, that is hugely important for me in Hamilton, is the feasibility of all of it. I mean, we're talking about 3A, we're talking about being required to have a certain district. I looked at the regulations, and for a commuter rail, it was supposed to be 15% of our existing housing. For Hamilton, we've been blessed with the 25% requirement of 731. And as the previous speaker mentioned, we only have half the circle, because Wenham has the other half of the circle. So there's a lot of things here. We already have water issues, you know, how will all these units impact our water? We have septic systems here, how will that be done appropriately? I live near, you know, walk near the backside of the seminary, where there is a treatment area there, and it doesn't work very well. So I just, you know, I'm just concerned about putting dense housing somewhere, wherever it is. How is that, how are we going to deal with the septic issues? What's going to happen there? And who pays for that? So that's all I have to say, and, and the, whatever, the school and everything else that goes along with that. So I just want all of that considered.
Yes, thank you.
That's a big job, and I thank you so much for handling this.
Thank you.
It's a huge job.
Is there anyone online who might like to speak? Well, to be continued. So the final item on our agenda is, well, maybe not the final, but as you may recall, we, I had drafted an implementation letter with respect to the master plan. And are you aware that the master plan is now up on the town's website?
Yes.
Madam Chair, before we leave this topic, can I just make one suggestion for a data point that I think could help the board, as well as the public, for UTIL to possibly provide? And that is, you've indicated how many units each zone could yield, and I don't know how hard it is to actually figure out how many units are already in those zones, so that people can see roughly, just roughly, what the delta is. And then, if there's any way to make an observation, I know you can't do this exactly, because a lot of these things are by special permit, but if you could make an observation of whether the current zoning as it exists pretty much allows the same density, less density, or more density, it would be like, kind of an opinion, you know, a look, a look feel at that, you know? So those would be pretty, I think, pretty simple data points, that would be awesome to show up on slides, and awesome to aim out into the public. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. So, back to the master plan. I, I don't know if you've seen it up on the website with its exquisite cover.
Yeah.
I love the cover.
You do? You like the horse on the cover.
I like the horse on the cover. Anyhow, so I gave you the final version of the implementation letter. We had approved it before, but I have now dated it April 2nd, and will send it off to the select board tomorrow, if you all are still on board with this.
I am.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't think we have to vote, but it's there. And so the final item on our agenda is the annual meeting. And Mark sent me a copy of a PowerPoint with respect to all our zoning bylaw amendments, and we've already, you know, discussed that the only amendment that's likely to garner any opposition, I think, is probably the GPOD. But you never know, you never know. But I suspect that because the real show is the approval of the consolidated school, I'm wondering if we'll even have a quorum when we get to it.
Yeah, we have to be after that vote, or is it...
We're after the vote, so...
So who are we going to designate to answer questions? If there comes, if there comes questions from the floor, after the, after the, you know, proposal for the groundwater protection is put up, you're going to have to have somebody answer questions.
I propose we nominate Beth, since she's not here.
Uh-uh. What?
Well, I wanted to, I wanted it to be Jonathan, but I think he might have a conflict. So I, if anybody would like to volunteer to stand next to me, we could be a tag team.
I'm going to have eye surgery, so I'll be wearing sun and dark sunglasses when I come to you. So I don't want to do a...
You're having cataract surgery?
Yeah.
No, no big deal.
No.
Well...
I can help you out if you want.
Yeah. Just sit like in the front row, you know? So if I forget something, you can see.
I'll bring my slideshow, so I can meditate.
So I think that, you know...
Jonathan, you, you've spoken very eloquently about...
Yes, but I have a memorial service I have to attend.
Ah, okay.
He would be the best.
He would absolutely be the best, but I, I'm hoping that I can articulate what, what's going on here. I tried to do it tonight, so if you have any suggestions of how I could do it better, just send me an email. So that's the scoop on the annual town meeting. We have slides that basically summarize what's going on. But my, my guess is that people are not going to want the long version, they'll want the short version. And so it's basically...
No, Jonathan's two-minute short version, this is a correction.
There you go.
Of a mistake.
The simple correction. Keep it simple.
Maybe, maybe Jonathan can do a, do a video.
Yeah, because Mark...
Get your phone out.
Yeah, Mark Johnson has indicated that it's not a correction, that, that it's always been this way, something, words to that effect, or at least this way for a long period of time. But we've made our decision, and we'll have to try and convince the public.
Shall I make a motion?
Yes, please do.
I move that we adjourn for the evening? No one second, huh?
Second?
I'll second.
I think since we're all here...